Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda here this evening is our public hearings that are scheduled. Just as a reminder to everybody, we have elected to, once again, take this meeting done to be completed virtually due to the increase in cases. And as I've stated prior, I think it's fair that we continue to conduct these meetings on a case-by-case, meeting-by-meeting basis at this point, and we will continue to do so. As a result of that, all citizens' input needs to be done by any means of communication being emailed to our city clerk, which is city underscore council@foreverma.org. That needs to be done 3:00 PM day of meeting, which has been pretty consistent all along since we've been doing our Zoom meetings. So at this point, we're going to open the first public hearing would be for-
Motion to open the hearing, Mr. President?
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Kilby. Seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion on opening, hearing none, roll call.
President, should we take roll call to start the, hope us to open up the public hearings generally?
Uh, yeah.
Prior to the motion to open?
That's, that's, that's a smart thing. Sorry, I went on my tangent.
That's okay.
Motion, public hearings.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Here. This time we'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Would be appropriate?
Yes.
Made by Councilor, made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Deion. Roll call on opening the hearing.
On opening hearing, the first hearing, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. First item on our public hearing is Alicia Barbosa of 37 Seaview Street for the removal of curbing. The petitioner has an existing 23-foot, 6-inch driveway opening on Woodman Street side of the property and is requesting the removal of 16 feet of curbing for a separate driveway opening for additional access on Seaview Street side. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking. Is there any proponents, Madam Clerk, that have written? Any?
Yes. Yes, we have a pro, one proponent. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the City Council. I wish to speak in the proponent section of the curb removal on 37 Seaview Street. I believe it is important that city government remain as helpful as we can to our city residents, especially in the time of a crippling pandemic. Improving access to property is the least we can do for our residents. We should also look into other ways we can help local residents and businesses. For example, we should work to redirect CDBG funding to match grants awarded to small businesses and nonprofits. The city should look into creating a no-interest loan fund for small businesses if we truly want to help individuals impacted by this pandemic. Also, instead of finding businesses, let's survey them. Let's bring them to the table, virtually of course. Let's solve the current divide between our city's businesses and the administration.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Is this a proponent for the public hearing?
Yes, this begins by saying the person wishes to speak as a proponent of a curb removal.
Okay. I'm missing the, the side here, but I'll allow you to continue a little further if you'd like.
Furthermore, let's create a municipal website only for COVID resources. This can create a lot of benefits for residents. Thank you very much for your time. Respectfully submitted, Collins Dykes.
Thank you. I just want to advise those who submit for citizens' input. It is obviously very important that the council hears from you during citizens' input, but I'd like to make sure that going forward, that our public hearing input is meant for proponents and opponents on the specific hearing that is open at that time. So if, if people would like to participate through citizens' input, you are happy to do so, but I'd just like to urge everybody that public hearings are meant for public hearings and citizens' input is meant for citizens' input. Is there any other proponents, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. President.
Any opponents?
None.
Motion to close the hearing.
Hearing no further. A motion to close the hearing has been made by Councilor Kilby. Seconded by Councilor Deion. Roll call.
I'm closing the public hearing. Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Next item, Maria D. Emerald of 207 Stafford Road. It would be the next hearing. Is there a motion to open?
To open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing by Councilor Deion, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Roll call on opening the hearing.
Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. First item, rather, the second item, calling all proponents. Madam Clerk, any written proponents on this item?
No, Mr. President.
Any opponents?
No.
There are no written proponents or opponents. There are a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Councilor Deion.
Second?
Seconded by Councilor Kilby. Roll call.
I'm closing the hearing. Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Next item is Louis D. Francis. Is the next public hearing. Is there a motion to open?
Motion, open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Deion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Roll call on opening the hearing. Madam Clerk?
An opening hearing number three, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Louise Defredus of 1641 Stafford Road for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting the removal of 47 feet of curbing on the Weidamo Street side of the property. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Madam Clerk, any proponents or opponents?
No, Mr. President.
Hearing none? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Councilor-
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
I'm closing the hearing. Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Next item is Rose D. Rodricks. Is there a motion to open?
Motion.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Deion. Roll call on opening the-
Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Rose D. Rodricks of 48 Thomas Street for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting to the, the removal of 10 feet, 4 inches of curbing to the existing 10-foot, 6-inch driveway opening to allow for additional access. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking. Madam Clerk, any written proponents or opponents?
None.
Hearing none, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing has been made by Councilor Deion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none, roll call on closing the hearing.
Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Next item is Antonio Mello of 40 Winfried Way. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Roll call on opening the hearing, please.
Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? And President Ponti.
Yes. Antonio Mello, 40 Winfried Way for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting the removal of 13 feet of curbing to the existing 16-foot driveway opening to allow for additional access. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking. Madam Clerk?
We have no, no written proponents or opponents.
Hearing no further. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close, Mr. President?
A public hearing has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Closing the hearing, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
I think we lost her.
And President Ponti.
Yes. I just want, again, before we adjourn this meeting, I just want to remind everybody that I'm not sure if I stated it clearly enough or didn't state it at all in the beginning of this public hearing. We are obviously still remote for this meeting. The meeting is going to be maintained through remote access and the participation in this public hearing is that, two, we are participating all remotely from our homes due to the COVID-19 situation that is before us. Is there a motion to adjourn our public hearings?
Motion made.
Motion made to adjourn has been made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Deion. Roll call on adjournment.
On adjournment, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? And President Ponti.
Yes. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
We're having a little bit of a technical issue here. I don't know. I'm going to call Councilor Pereira and see where she is before we open up our Committee on Finance. Hang tight. Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk, for the role.
Councilors Kadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libe Lebo?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are being acknowledged and permissible. This Committee on Finance meeting is being held remotely, just like our public hearing was held remotely and just like our full council meeting was held remotely for the purposes of the safety of all councilors, the community, City Hall employees. It's going to be a case-by-case basis, as I indicated prior to the beginning of our public hearing, and we'll take it meeting by meeting, but we want to make sure that we ensure everybody's safety and we will, we will be having this meeting to be had and to be held through a remote basis. With that being said, citizens' input is the first item on our agenda. Citizens' input could have been submitted to the City Council Office prior to 3:00 PM on the calendar day of our public meeting. It could be emailed to city underscore council@foreverma.org the day of the meeting and the clerk will then, at that time, read our public hearings. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Madam Clerk?
As the Special Projects for Green Futures and Vice President of the Flint Neighborhood Association, I am deeply concerned regarding Republic Services' plan to place 1 million tons of impacted fill at the dump. My concerns range from who will actually be testing the impacted soil and what is the oversight for such a massive amount of fill to the location of where the fill will be located. Especially important is this fill's proximity to the city's water supply. Republic Services has said that they will take impacted soil from sites such as the former St. Vincent's home, which as part of the shell tanks that leaked over the years is hardly lightly contaminated. I strongly urge that Fall River takes stringent measures to ensure the safety of our drinking water. This is from Joseph Carvalho, Special Projects Director of Green Futures.
Councilor Deion?
Yeah, I don't normally respond to citizens' input, but in this case, I think it's an important matter. I think Mr. Carvalho makes good points, especially when you're considering the close proximity to our, to our drinking water. I believe that the council and the residents of the city should know where the soils originating, where all the soils are originating from, the level of contamination, because as we know, acceptable levels can go from very minor to borderline unacceptable. And I, I just don't think we want to put anybody in a position where we have to worry about these types of contaminants. So with that, I yield.
Thanks, Councilor Lee.
In response to my colleague and also to the citizens' input, just to inform people, we do have a resolution out there for, for the next, for our regular city council meeting to address this issue. And just to inform everyone, I've reached out to Mass D E P, was in an hour-long telephone conference with them, and they explained to me in detail the processes that Mr. Carvalho and also some other citizens out there have, have expressed about this situation. So there is, there is a very thorough process and plan to in the future. I'm actually just waiting for the resolution to go through so I can, and I can try to schedule a subcommittee meeting through the Health and Environmental Affairs to sort of have, not, not exactly a full presentation like I had, like that hour-long presentation, but just to, just to give the facts to the information. And I also, Mass D E P gave me the contact information to a person who specifically addresses social justice, I'm sorry, environmental justice issues, and I gave that contact to Mr. Carvalho. So Mass D E P was very active in the response to, to my, my requests and, and is looking to be active with the people who care about these issues. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Next, citizens' input, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, I didn't see everybody saying. Councilor Kadim, followed by Councilor Pereira.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just along the lines of Councilor Lee, I just wanted to kind of reassure the citizen that had submitted that, Mr. Carvalho. D E P is going to be monitoring all the fill that comes into the landfill. So if there is, there is any oil leaks, they, they have released tracking numbers that they, they follow and they're going to be monitoring it. It's very specific, as Councilor Lee has said, to, you know, the requirements that are, that are allowed and what they can actually have for fill in the, in the landfills. So there is quite the oversight when it comes to D E P and, and the E A P, I mean EPA, when, when we stop moving fill from one, one property to another, especially if there's contamination. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I have to agree with Councilor Kadim. I did reach out to Republic because, as you know, the last time we covered contaminated property up at the landfill, that was during the Sutter administration, and I pushed for that. And at that time, I had asked all the questions about, you know, how close we were to the water, you know, and what kind of soil was being contaminated there. So I did get a response from Republic after talking to Chris Messera, and I had the council office email that out to all the councilors, and he went point for point of, you know, all the steps that they take to make sure that what they're doing is okay with D E P, et cetera. So, and I did reach out to Councilor Lee today to let him know that that letter was there, so with his resolution to have all parties at the table, and I wanted the rest of you to know what the response was from Republic. So I just got it and sent it out. You would have gotten it this afternoon. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from anybody else on this? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next citizens' input.
City councilors of Fall River, I do not normally reach out to my, to my representatives, but I came upon news today that will critically impact my ability to work from home during this pandemic. Recently Comcast Xfinity notified its customers that starting in January, it will now have an internet data cap charging customer, charging if customers go over a limit. Historically, if a customer exceeds a data cap, they will throttle down their data after that point, but no extra charges are made. They mentioned a data cap of 1.2 terabytes, which may sound exorbitant, but with kids and spouses home from school and work, this only takes a few 4K movies and Zoom calls for a few hours a day, and they will have exceeded that limit. This can cause an internet bill of over $300 a month for some families and requires them to use Comcast hardware as opposed to their own private modems if they pay extra for their unlimited plan. Additionally, there are other Fall River residents like me who work, who work IT jobs and siphon through large amounts of data daily. With federal net neutrality repealed and a state-level version unclear on data caps, this leaves large internet providers like Comcast to take advantage of their customers during a pandemic where the internet is the only way to keep people like me employed. Though I come to you with a problem, I also come to you with a solution, city municipal internet. City-owned municipal internet plans offer a local solution that benefits both city members and the city itself over time. Of course, upfront costs to set up such a program would cost several millions of dollars, but the year-on-year return would eliminate that deficit over a period of several years. Cities like Quincy, Lowell, and Braintree are offering programs like this with tremendous success, even raising property values by 3%, and studies from Harvard have shown that community-owned internet is statistically cheaper and more successful than big-name internet companies. I implore you all to seriously look into this plan. I think it would both benefit the city of Fall River and its residents, giving them the option to choose local internet over their singular option that is price gouging its customers. I would love to provide more information and even have the pleasure of knowing the former city councilor of Lowell, who proposed their initial municipal internet bill and could even ask for her experience to aid you if this is a path viable to the city. This, this person also provided a link to the Harvard study should the councilers wish to read it. Very respectfully, Eric Sowersby, 22 Apple Creek Lane.
Thank you, and I just want to weigh in on this and for a very quick moment. I think it'd probably be appropriate, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, to maybe send this communication over to our Corporation Council as they are in, they are in discussions, I believe, on the Comcast contract. But, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to pass that along to Corporation Council if they want to, or we can just forward it over as, as a pure, you know, gesture that we, we responded to it. So-
I'll, I'll make a motion, Mr. President, to have we send this to Corporation Council and ask them to make it a priority.
A motion to send a Corporation Council has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Lee. Discussion, Councilor Kadim? Unmute yourself, please, Counselor.
I noticed this was just citizen input, but, you know, the topic of municipally-run internet service-
Hey, I hate to tell you, now I have no, no audio.
We can hear you. We can hear you. Councilor Kadim, go ahead.
It doesn't make sense for a community like us. Number one, we don't have a municipal lighting company which would allow us to utilize poles and cables-
Muted me.
The problem-
Can't hear anything?
Is the economies of a scale. The reason Comcast is able to, to make so much money is, is that they have over 50% of the, of the target market, and any company that's going to come in, it needs to see at least 50% of the target market in order to break even. We won't be able to see it. On top of it all, companies that are in the private sector don't need to utilize prevailing wage, which is roughly 30% more than what a, a private company would, would pay. And then if we start talking about something like this, we're talking about an enterprise fund, so we're going to start seeing similar costs associated with, you know, the water and sewer rates and driving up these costs. From my standpoint, I, I don't support, you know, a municipally-run internet service. I, I think it's just going to be too costly and, and the amount of money that we're going to have to generate, the upfront money, is going to be exorbitant, and it's just going to be passed on to the, to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion to refer to Corporation Council, Councilor Lee, do you want to speak on this?
No, I was to second the, the motion that you, that you, that Council Kilby presented.
Fair enough. There's a motion to refer to Corporation Council, the written citizens' input to Corporation Council, hearing no further discussion on the referral. Roll call.
On referral, Councilors Kadim?
No.
Hold on. Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libe Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Do you want to try calling in on your phone, Councillor Pereira?
Here you go.
There you go. I can hear you now. Go ahead, say it. Yes, no, maybe? Okay.
I can't hear anybody.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so she can't hear us. Just.
President Ponti?
Yes.
She might have, if she's using her phone, she'd probably mute herself on the phone.
I'm not sure. She can't hear. Alex, I, I know we're in the middle of citizens' input, but if somebody from Fred TV could call Councillor Pereira, please, and work her way through this. It looks like she just left the meeting anyway, so Councillor Pereira is having some technical difficulties. I'm sure she'll get to the bottom of them shortly. Next citizen's input, Madam Clerk, if there's any?
There is. This message is for the city council. I'm a current resident of the city and have been since my parents immigrated to Fall River in 1969. On October 8th of this year, I had a medical emergency that required Fall River EMS to respond to my residents. My experience with the two paramedics that responded that night was shocking and frightening. I requested an EMS summary of that night and was shocked to find fraudulent documentation on the report. I've been a nurse for almost 19 years and I'm well-versed in medical assessments and terminology. I'm asking to speak directly to you folks so that I can tell my story. Charlie Pereira, 707 Norman Street. The next item we have, Council President Ponti, Vice President La Liberty, members of the city council. Hope you all had a great stuffing holiday. I'm writing to you guys today really concerned on the handling of COVID. The one person that should care, I believe, is making the issues worse. I hear there is a Christmas tree lighting scheduled for Saturday. If that is true, are we inviting the public to this? And if we are, then shame on Paul Coogan. We shouldn't, as a city, be promoting gatherings of anything. And I think Paul Coogan has failed his role to protect the citizens of this city. I applaud Council President for doing what the governor is instructing, and that is keeping himself and his council members safe and doing Zoom meetings until further notice. That is good leadership. I ask that this board write a letter to Paul Coogan to tell him he should follow the rules of no gatherings and do not have a light of the tree. If we want, if we want to, then go remote. We're supposed to save lives, not add to the testing or death. Thank you. Stay safe. David Olivera, 210 Robinson Street. And we have one last one. Topic, city affairs. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the city council. I wish to speak on a few pressing matters facing our city. First, I wish to reiterate the grave concerns regarding the recent meetings of school committee and the complaints levied against Superintendent Malone. I wish to state as a resident of this community, I'm appalled by the lack of transparency by the administration and the school department regarding the hiding of information regarding the nature of complaints or even who the complaints are against. I'm completely dumbfounded as to why the administration or the school department cannot give a mere statement as to the nature of the complaint. Obviously, we don't want to impede or obstruct any investigation and understand that every bit of information cannot be released. However, the public has a right to know when there is misdoing of any of our public officials and if the city is at risk for liability. Obviously, these cannot be small complaints if the school committee is meeting an executive session for four hours at a time. The city council has a role to maintain public accountability and transparency in government, and you should be demanding the administration provide an update to the public. The silence of all the city councillors on this issue is also appealing. On another note, I wish to discuss two items on the council agenda tonight. Number one, I believe park grants should be used to improve park architecture and cracks in walk paths in parks, along with upgraded security in parks such as surveillance and, and quote-unquote, park police. Secondly, I believe the city council is not focusing on their, on the proper priorities. There's a resolution submitted by the city council that alleges city residents are complaining about the upcoming soils management project in the city dump. Council who submitted the resolution should know there are no residents within miles of the dump, so I am confused to why there are complaints about this. I've attached a copy of a map of the city of Fall River in case said councillor forgot that the city dump has no residential housing within multiple miles. I believe this resolution amounts to micromanaging and the city council efforts should be focused elsewhere. Thank you very much for your time. Respectfully submitted, Collins Dykes.
Thank you very much, and I just want to make a quick comment on this only because there was a comment made with respect to the council as a body on this specific item. Not to add any additional light to it, but any issues pertaining to the superintendent would need to be a, a school committee-related matter. And I can't comment as to whether or not, or why the school department did or didn't make a comment. I can just say it's a school department matter, it's a personnel matter, and it's a matter that is being discussed and dealt with by our duly and professionally-elected school committee members. So I just wanted to make that comment. The council really does not have a role in this, at that. And I really want to leave it at that if we can, not to really expound too much. I just want to, I'd like to leave it at that.
Just quickly, Mr. President, I, I totally support your comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move to the agenda. I definitely support your comment 100%.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, hearing no further citizens' input, Madam Clerk, Councillor Pereira, are you here with us? Can you hear us okay? If you can just unmute yourself, Counselor, we can't hear you, but.
I'm sorry, something happened with the internet service in my area. I, I didn't hear the last citizen input, but there was one citizen input I, I believe. Are you done with citizen input now or is there another?
Yeah, it's all done.
Was there one from a gentleman with regards to EMS?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just to add to that, I did have a conversation with Mr. Olivera, who's the director over at EMS, and he claims that there was an investigation done and this gentleman also sent it to the state, so the state is doing an investigation. And I think that's the proper channel to get any concerns that this gentleman may have, because clearly I'm, I'm not a nurse and none of us are. You know, I really wouldn't know much about the procedures that are done. So just that, you know, it is being looked into. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next item on our agenda, but before we continue, I, Madam Clerk, it just came to me. I know that there was some ongoing discussions with Corporation Council with respect to our Zoom meetings being held remotely and announcing everybody's name. Is, what was the final conclusion on that? I mean, do I have to announce everybody's name? Or does the fact that you announced everybody's name in lieu of roll call and everybody acknowledged whether they're here or not is acceptable?
Attorney Howie X suggested, sort of as a compromise, that all of the names appear on the screen for all councillors. Apparently, when it airs on television on Channel 18, the names do not appear unless the councillor or whomever is speaking. FRG TV is working diligently to try to rectify that, to ensure that it is on the screen at all times. We did, I did speak to someone at the AG's office who, who basically stated that provided that we are taking roll call votes and we do so at the beginning of every meeting to, you know, the public is well-aware of which council members are present.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that and make sure. And, and I want the community to know that, you know, this whole Zooms meetings with a body of nine councillors is, is challenging. And we are doing our very best with the clerks to try to be as transparent and follow all these rules, whether they're written or unwritten, to make sure that we're doing our best by the community. Next item on our agenda is a memorandum of agreement, ownership of the Bank Street Armory in the city of Fall River. At this time, we are welcoming back our city planner, Bill Kenny, as well as attorney Coughlin that we are welcoming back into the meeting. I don't know, I think John Perry is here for our next item on our agenda. And I have no idea what the phone number is that's waiting to come in. A 677-2800 number here, so I really don't know what that, what that is. So at this point, Attorney Kenny is here, as well as Attorney John Coughlin, who represents the, Attorney Coughlin represents the redevelopment authority as their attorney. Bill Kenny is our city planner. Mrs. Sahadi is here as well. For the purposes of discussion, Mrs. Sahadi, would you like to give us a brief overview, please, on the work that has been done to date?
Yes, certainly, Council President. So in your packet is a memorandum of agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority. And this is included in your packet in draft form so that we can have a discussion this evening with regard to the sections of this particular agreement that are of interest to the council. In particular, there was some discussion during the council briefings that we should have this agreement in place to protect you as a body with regard to the sale of the armory to a private developer. So we did, we did just that. We worked very diligently with Attorney Coughlin, and we developed an MOU that I believe satisfied everyone's needs in the sense of restricting, if you will, what the armory would be used for in the future, meaning an event center, hoping to work with a private developer who has experience in the area of armories. And in addition to be able to, if in fact this particular sale does not go through to a particular, or to any private developer who meets the, the abilities to really remodel the armory in a way such that it would allow us to utilize it as an event center, it would come back to the city of Fall River. There was some discussion initially as to a shared sale price with the RDA. It has been agreed in this MOU that the only costs that the RDA would incur are those costs that include insurance and any maintenance and utility costs and any legal costs that the RDA encourages prior to the sale of the property and the remaining information, or the remaining sale, sale price would come back to the city. In addition, there's a restriction in here where it wouldn't be sold, sold for less than the assessed value. But at that point, I believe that Mr. Kenny and/or Attorney Coughlin, which I think we lost.
Don his way back in right now.
Okay, it's certainly here, available to answer any questions. There was a discussion earlier today with regard to the property. If in fact the developer, whoever the developer is, just decides to sell the property at some point in the future, that it would have a first right of refusal back to the city. And that paragraph was added by Attorney Coughlin this afternoon. So it should be in all of your emails late this afternoon, but if not, Attorney Coughlin can speak to that provision specifically.
Questions, Counselor Lee?
Yes, I just had a, just, just some questions. The, on, on the MOU section, I believe it's eight, let me take a look real quick here. Yeah, it says that the private developer shall be required to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the city to the extent that the private developer or the use is deemed not otherwise required to pay real estate taxes. We, in our, in our meeting, we, you mentioned the term pilot. Is that, is that what this is right here?
Um, yes, so payment in lieu of taxes, pilot is the, is the abbreviation of that term.
And, and in regards to that, is, is it going to be, is there, is there actual figures that we have? Or is there, is there an estimated figure that we could have that would, that we know would be, would come back as a, as a payment or in taxes?
Um, we, Counselor, we don't, at the, at this particular moment, we certainly don't know what the value of the property will be after the investment or the remodeling will be done. So at this particular point, we don't know what the assessed value is. I can tell you that I did a little bit of research this afternoon. Quite frankly, not terribly extensive, but because some of the city halls, quite frankly, are closed. But I was able to get on Pawtucket's website. And Pawtucket's website, that particular armory is assessed at $575,000 and they are, this gentleman is actually paying taxes. Oh, can you hear that, please? Those taxes are actually being paid at $19,830. I was also able to look up Windsocket. Now, the interesting thing with Windsocket is that transaction just occurred, so the tax bill is still in the name of St. James Church. But the assessed value for the Windsocket property is $647,600 and the tax bill is $22,820. So if we make a comparison and compare both Pawtucket and Windsocket, if this particular property by the developer is remodeled, if you will, or rehabbed in the same manner, and we look at those two tax bills, one is, as I said, $19,800 and the other is $22,800. One would expect if this individual were to create a nonprofit to hold this property and the, and the investment is approximately the same for both Pawtucket and for Windsocket, you would expect the bill, the pilot payment to be somewhere around $20,000.
Okay, I appreciate that information. The other part is, it's, it's in the same section, but part five. So I believe it's section eight, part five, or V, that the RDA shall have a right of reverter to acquire the title to the armory back from the private developer if the project is not commenced or completed on time. So even though citizens' input didn't, I guess the citizens didn't get their input in on time, we still received an input that questioned this section. And there was concern because there was a, there is a property, 64 Durfee Street, that has, you know, that, that, that came with a, with a, with a lot of problems. I don't want to, I, I don't think we can go into every single detail of it unless other councils want to. But there was a lot of problems with that and a lot of it pertained to the fact that, that the reverter clause was an issue. So I, I, I believe Councillor Dion, and of course she can, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but Councillor Dion had concerns about us losing control of the property if there was ever a situation. And in this situation, in, in, in section five there, says that the RDA, it says that the RDA would get the, the title back. So in, in, in essence, the city, the city will, would lose control of the situation. It would be in the RDA situation if, if, if this buyer did not follow through in the long run. Is that, is that correct or am I wrong here?
Well, the, the way I'm understanding it, and again, Attorney Coughlin can certainly speak to the matter, but in item eight, three, there's an indication that the timeframe is that they would start the renovations within six months and complete the renovations within 24 months of acquiring the title.
Right.
Which time, I would assume that we would then revert back to section six or item six, where the RDA would then revert the property back to the city of Fall River because it wasn't disposed of within the six-month timeframe. But this is in draft form, so if council has anything in particular that they would like to add to this draft, I'm certain that the redevelopment authority, as represented by Attorney Coughlin, would be happy to make any changes.
And, and I guess my question is, the section six that you just mentioned and eight, eight, section five, do they clash? It looks like there's, it doesn't look consistent. I mean, maybe that's just me. I'm not, maybe I'm not reading it correctly. But it doesn't, it doesn't look consistent. It looks like the RDA would get the, the, would get the title if there's a reverter. And it would go back to the city.
Counselor, just for a clarification, are you referencing where it says the RDA shall complete the disposition of the armory to a private developer within six months of obtaining title from the, to the armory from the city, if said?
Mr. President, point of information, what Councillor Lee is talking about is item five and six. One's a reverter clause, the other one's a first, a right of first refusal, which is two separate items. So right of first refusal would be if the, like, sells the property, we would have their first, we, we would have the right of first refusal, so we would have the first right to purchase the property.
I'm in, I'm in section eight and then it's Roman numeral five.
Yeah, and that, so that was the, so that's the reverter clause.
Yes.
That reverter clause is, is if they don't complete or meet the, the agreements that were set out, we get to take the, or the RDA gets to take the property back.
Right, so the RDA gets the property back, not the city, is my point, right?
In, in that case, yeah.
Okay, that, that was, I think that is a concern, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Because I think that in the long run, if, if things don't work out, we ultimately want the city to have this back.
Water.
And I'll, and I'll yield. I'll, I'll let my other councillor colleagues talk about it, but I yield on that.
I don't know where Attorney Coughlin is. I think he must have left us, or he's having technical difficulties. Councillor Dion, your point of information?
Um, if, if you look in the memorandum of agreement, number nine, it states that in the event that the RDA acquires title to the armory back from the private developer at any time, then the city shall thereafter have a right of reverter to acquire the ba, the title back to the armory from the RDA.
Okay.
So, so actually, there's a reverter for the RDA and then the reverter for the city follows that.
Okay, that's the follow-through. That's the follow-through.
Item nine.
Yeah, and it's okay, Counselor, because I know that not a lot of, not a lot of us have had the opportunity to read this because it did come late in the day today. So these questions and because not all councillors have had the time to read it all, is, is obviously some good question. So there's, there's no problems there.
So I, I yield the floor. Thank you for that and thank you, Councillor Dion.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, next councillor, Councillor Pelletier, followed by Councillor Kilby, Dion and Pereira.
I'm just wondering if the, the city takes it back or has to take it back. The assessed value according to the books is $280,000, I believe. And.
Two thirty-eight, Counselor.
What is it?
Two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight, which is, to me, that's cheap for that building, especially if the guy knows what he liked to do, and he does do it, I guess throughout the state, and he's pretty good at it. But if the city gets it back or with the reverter clause, well, how's that, how's that go? Is it $280,000 or is it more money?
No, the, the property would be, would be transferred back to us, assuming that there needs to be a, a value attached to it. It would be for the same dollar that it was transferred to them in the first place, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, it does. So if he poured in a million dollars in there and we get it back, we could still get it back with the reverter clause, or they don't want it for $280?
Well, I'm assuming, and, and Attorney Coughlin, I know you're back and you're not muted, so maybe you can speak in on this, but if the developer were to put a million dollars into it, I'm assuming it would be in a usable state at that point. I know that the developer has spoken about putting five or six or seven million dollars into it, so I'm not quite sure, you know, utilizing your example of a million dollars, where we, where we would be going with that, because I would think it would be an unfinished project. And then if it were an unfinished project, the, the item that if it's not, it's item eight, five, if it is not completed on time, the RDA would then acquire the title back.
Is Attorney Coughlin, Attorney Coughlin, I see your name here. Are you here with us? I don't know.
Well, you know, we had a lot of buildings that we sold for cheap money and then they develop, developers get it, knock it down and put five or six units in there and then. And then they developed, developers get it, knock it down and put five or six units in there, and then make a money. Then we had the nightmares, like the, the police station. And even the Truesdale property that we sold up there for the doctors, and housing that got it. And those seem to be a problem. But the city right now seems to have someone who does this type of thing in different places throughout the state. And really has, what I see, is that he does a good job. And it would be, I guess, to our benefit, and even not to let him go to the real estate committee to try to dispose of this particular piece of property. And if we had to go to RDA, and they kind of agreed that they weren't going to take too much money, and, and we would get some money back. And I thought about this, I, I think it's the way to go with this individual. Because nobody else does that type of work. And we could use it in the city just like that, and I, I think it'd be a good idea. And, and the reverter clause, I think, is very important, and it should be in there all the time. All the buildings that we sell. And some of the buildings that we sold, they're going to put housing, they're going to spend all kinds of money, and then didn't do nothing with it, and it's still sitting out there. They paid twenty-five thousand for it, all of a sudden, the guy wants four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand. Well, it's not fair to the city. If there was a reverter clause in there, that if you sell it for more than you paid, that you should give some back to the City of Fall River. So, you know, I, I think this is the way to go with this certain individual. And if it's going to go to RDA, all well and good, it's probably the best way to go. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Council Vice President La Liberty Lobo.
Thank you. So I met with the, had my mayor's briefing today with the mayor and Mrs. Sahadi. And we went over a couple of things, so I'm glad that you were able to amend the MOU to put the right of first refusal in there. Whenever, I think I have answers to all of my questions, except for Counselor Dion brought to our attention this afternoon when looking into the projects that this gentleman has done, that in Worcester that he owed back taxes. So I asked Mrs. Sahadi if she would call the locations that he's done this type of project, in which there are three, five, Pawtucket, Worcester, Keene, and Concord, New Hampshire, and Wind Socket. Specifically Worcester, I'm sorry, specifically Keene, to make sure that those back taxes have been paid. And then if he owed in any of the others. Now Pawtucket, he is a, he's registered as a nonprofit in Pawtucket, correct, Mrs. Sahadi?
Um, no, actually, in Pawtucket, he is registered as Pawtucket Armory Ot Center LLC. And so he's actually paying taxes, real estate taxes in Pawtucket.
So I know the mayor had him on the phone today, and he was speaking of some issues that were involved with the building in Keene. And, and getting those back taxes that he inherited paid. However, he still owes, according to the article, which, to be fair, was in April. But when I asked him on the phone today if those were paid, his answer wasn't as solid as I would have liked to be. And did you say that Mayor Coogan was calling Keene?
Um, yes, so this afternoon, Mayor Coogan and myself, you know, split up the list so we could attempt to contact some of these municipalities. We did not receive an answer to the phone call in Keene, New Hampshire. In Pawtucket, they're closed from November thirtieth to December thirteenth due to COVID. Wind Socket did not answer the phone either, and I believe they are also either not working within City Hall or working specifically remotely. And I did not try Concord. So we can continue to try to reach out to communities and attempt to get some better answers for you. I'm assuming most of these communities, the finance, the collector's and or assessor's office are at least reading their emails. And so with a little bit more time, we may be able to better answer your questions. But unfortunately, this afternoon, the clock ran out, so to speak.
Okay, so that, that is one issue I have with this, is, is making sure that that's all set. And then the other issue, and I spoke to Mr. Kenny today about, the, the question is, why would we give this to the RDA? When we could sell it here, and we talked about timing. And if Mr. Kenny could just repeat his answer from this afternoon?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, I think that the, the reason for transferring to the redevelopment authority is to look at them as your agents. They're your agent and your partner as well in, in this transaction. Think of it as the shortest distance right now between two points. The point of having the building empty, and the point of finding somebody who's ready, willing and able to start work and within thirty days of, of the closing, and who said that he'd put in between five and eight million dollars. The thing about the redevelopment authority is the flexibility that they have to negotiate with somebody who's presented himself at their door, knocking on the door with his checkbook in his hand. The alternative is to go out and have the council sell it under a thirty B process. You're casting your net out for somebody to come forward. You don't know what you're going to catch. Right now, you've got a fish on the table. The only way that you can talk to him directly is through the redevelopment authority because they're exempt from the thirty B process. They can start negotiations the day that you approve this transfer, and they can bring it to a conclusion within the guidelines that you have set for them. If for some reason, the process doesn't come to a fruitful termination, you get the property back, the city gets the property back, and frankly, the developer runs some risk. If they develop, if they put in a large amount of money, and all of a sudden, for some reason, they don't finish the project on time, or they don't finish it to the satisfaction of the redevelopment authority, the city gets it back, together with the improvements and the value of the improvements that have been put into it to that date. So the developer has a, a risk in a sense in doing that. But I think the real answer to your question is, the age, the redevelopment authority acts as your agent under your guidance set forth in the MOU. Those are your guidelines within which they have to comply. They are the shortest distance between these two points right now. They can start negotiating the day you approve this. And frankly, my view of this is, what have you got to lose? You've got a building that's been empty for how many years? Money's been poured into it just to secure it, so it doesn't deteriorate further. The redevelopment authority was designed, and the whole urban renewal process was designed to meet this sort of circumstance where a developer presents himself and wants to talk turkey. And you know what? If it doesn't work out in six months, you get it back. The redevelopment authority's all done, you can deal with it yourself. So I think the risk to the city is minimal. I think the redevelopment authority is, is the proper vehicle to use to expedite the process. I hope that answered you.
It does, it does, and we're not in any way circumventing thirty B.
Circumvention is not really an appropriate term for this. It's two different paths to the same result. And the result is attained potentially much quicker if you go the redevelopment authority route. It's not, it's not intended like an either or, it's not that you're circumventing anybody. It's just alternative paths, either of which is legitimate. But it just appears that in this particular case, going through the redevelopment authority is the most expeditious way to handle it, and with minimal risk to the city itself. And by the way, with a lot of potential gain. You know, we talk about, what's the pilot going to be, what are we going to get for taxes? The thing that you should focus, I think, partly on is the spin-off effect with this kind of a transformative development in the downtown. As to the encouragement of other businesses to locate down here, to have restaurants, other venues. They're going to be paying taxes, they're going to be attracting people. They're going to make the downtown a much more exciting place to visit and to live and to work.
Thank you. So my only hang-up on this, as it stands, is just finding out if those taxes have been paid, Mrs. Sahadi.
But by the way, that's something that you could put into your memorandum of agreement with the redevelopment authority. You could say to them, look, we know that you're going to check out the financial ability of this guy, and we want to make sure that he's playing fair with the other cities where he's working. That he's up to date on his taxes, that there's nothing in his financial situation that rings any, you know, that raises any red flags. And I think maybe you could just direct them to make that sort of due diligence inquiry. I don't think it's, you know, an insurmountable issue. But I agree with you, he's got to, he's got to prove that there's some legitimate reason for, for being, you know, maybe not paying taxes. And sometimes there are good reasons. There may be a dispute about the amount. There may be a, a question of the proper valuation and the proper tax. So just the fact that they're unpaid on the books at a certain point in time, I don't think is necessarily the end of the discussion.
Correct. No, he had, he was on the phone, and he had said the, the first taxes were because, that he had inherited those with the purchase. But then the article went to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, he started talking about it in easement and a road. And I, I didn't want to go down that path with him. But if we could put that into the MOU, that would be helpful. And I appreciate Counselor Dion doing her research and looking into him and his other venues. And I, I know that we don't have a city administrator, and we talk about this all the time, but I feel like a city administrator would have, would have done that. But I appreciate Counselor Dion doing it and, and letting us know about this. So I would, I would need that amended in there, or an answer from the municipalities that he is fine with them. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Pam asked my, my major question, what was going to be why, you know, to, to Attorney Kenny. And I think Attorney Kenny gave a, a pretty good answer. In terms of the tax.
Pretty good, just pretty good.
No, I'm sorry? No, I think.
Pretty good.
Did a thorough job in terms of, of giving, giving an answer. But, you know, and I heard Mary say, of course, this is going to protect the city, it's going to be an event center. You know, the, the purchase price or the assessment value was two thirty-eight, which Counselor Pelletier said, which I, I think is undervalued as well. But I know, I know in terms of what potentially can be there. And, and for me, this is a, it's, it's a preservation project for me. I mean, this is a, you know, I don't want to go out of line here, but this is sacred ground. The Bank Street Armory is, I think was built right around World War One. It's, it's such a fixture in our community. So a direct question, Mr. Kenny. Who was the developer that is looking at this project? I know if it goes through the city, you're going to have to go through a lobbying process and thirty B, and, you know, and all of that stuff. That, you know, which Counselor Pelletier is very experienced in doing. So who, who's, if it gets to transfer to redevelopment authority, there's already a candidate who's putting this on the table. For full disclosure, who is that entity?
That's a good question, and I, I don't know if, if he wants us to disclose at this point.
And I have a problem with that. I think it should be vented.
I just don't know the answer.
I think it should be, well, I think it should be vented in the real estate committee. This is my opinion. I, 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 like I said, I think that's sacred ground. I, in my opinion, and I'm not willing to make a dis, I talked to the mayor this week about this as well. And, you know, I told him my intentions in terms, we don't want to see that place fall down. But I think we need more thorough, thorough discussion. I'm sorry if my, my colleagues, I'm off keel on this one. But I think it should go to the Committee of Real Estate, which I'm a member of, who chairs, and Counselor Lee chairs. And let's, similar, Counselor Pelletier, what we did with the police station. We found a, a well-grounded, I think, individual who was very impressive, very impressive. So, you know, and another individual who's chairman of the, no slight to you, Mr. Kenny. You did a great job when you were chairman of the redevelopment authority, but we have Mr. Marshall there now, who I have the utmost respect for. Whatever he puts his hands on, it turns into something that's forthright and something that's gold. So I'm going to make a motion that we refer this matter to, to real estate.
Could I, could I comment on your remarks?
A little more venting process, so that's my motion.
Uh, Ca- Counselor, if I may, this.
Can I respond to that, Mr. President?
Mr. Mr. Kenny, before you do, just give me one moment, please.
Okay.
I just wanted to advise Counselor Kilby, if he wants to continue with his motion, this is in our full counsel. So this is for the purposes of discussion in the Committee on Finance right now. So do you want to, do you find it, to be fair, to maybe continue?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I interrupt too much. Am I, am I precluded from making a motion to refer to real estate? We should probably do that, it's my opinion.
You're not pre- precluded from that, but right now, it's on the Committee on Finance for discussion. It is in full counsel, so at that point in full counsel, you can then refer it to the Committee on Finance if you would like at that point. I think it's.
Now, I'll yield, I'll yield then. Thank you.
Kenny, if you can answer Counselor Kilby's question, I think you wanted to speak a little bit on it.
Yeah, I would. First of all, that's sacred ground for a lot of reasons. From the city planning point of view, it's a critical link. We've talked for years about reconnecting the waterfront and the downtown. And that whole Armory neighborhood and the public library neighborhood is a, is a serious link in that chain. So we want to make sure that it, that it's preserved as such. And as far as the historic character of the building, keep in mind that when the CPC funds were used for repairs, the Mass Historic Commission imposed very serious historic preservation restrictions on that building. Those restrictions follow that building wherever it goes. They, they cannot be removed to get any, I don't even know if any one of them could be waived. I, I suppose if you went to Mass Historic at some point, and, and had a legitimate reason to waive one of those conditions, you might be able to, to do it, but I, I'd be very surprised to see them agree to that. The building's on the National Register of Historic Places, it's on the State Register of Historic Places, it's on the local register. It's protected also by the Arts Overlay District in that neighborhood. So the, I'm quite sure the future of that building is secure. And I'm a preservationist myself by, by inclination, and wouldn't support anything that I thought put the thing at risk. As the identity of, of this individual, it's public record, if you can Google Pawtucket Armory, you can Google Wind Socket, you can Google his other projects, it's Brian Tebow. I just made the decision to give you his name, because you can get it if you want. You can just go on the, on the internet. And it's no mystery, man, it's not a surprise, and, and there you have it. So I think the proof is in the pudding as to the work that he's done. That Pawtucket Armory is spectacular, and to do that in Fall River would, would indeed be transformative to our downtown.
Thank you. He responded to your question, I'll let you to speak a little bit more on it, if you like.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Kenny. Yeah, but my, my point is, you know, I, I think we, we should not do these things on a fly, so to speak. I had a very, a very educational, a very good meeting with Counselor Pelletier when we, we, we spoke to the, the buyer of the police station. I was very impressed with his genuineness and his qualifications and his track record. And so I know for myself, I, I would just like to hear more from the prospective buyer of the property. And so I'll deal with that, Mr. President, and I'll make that motion to refer to real estate. And, and, and also, we can also put that with Counsel Pelletier's permission. Hopefully, we'll put on the board of school on that agenda as well, so.
Thank you. Counselor Dion?
Yeah, um, through the chair to the clerk. I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe I saw a citizen's input in relation to, to this topic. Did we have citizens' input for this and miss it, or did it not get in on time?
I, I checked with the council secretary, there was not one submitted to that, to the council email address.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want us to miss anything. All right, thank you. I do have a few questions on this. And I brought this up at my briefing, that I have a little bit of a reservation in terms of, the redevelopment authority has six months to basically seal the deal, complete the disposition with this particular developer. If for whatever reason, if this, if the endeavor fails, say, within the first month, and he decides he doesn't want it, and, and he's going to walk away from the project, that leaves the redevelopment authority five months to potentially, if they wanted to, find another developer, if there was somebody who came forward and met their criteria, et cetera. So when I ask that question. So when I ask that question, if I'm correct, Mr. Kenny told me that yes, that, that was a possibility, that some, that they could entertain a different developer i- if that failed. So my concern is if within the six months this man doesn't follow through, the city and this, and this council have basically relinquished any input into who another potential developer could be. So for me, that's just a little bit, a, a little bit of a problem. I would feel better if knowing, since we have a targeted individual, that if this particular, this particular disposition didn't come through within the six, in even less than the six months, it would come back to the city until they could find another developer. And then we could have this conversation and go through this process again. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but it would make me feel a little more comfortable. Yes, please.
No, I think if I understand your concern, it's that if, if the prospective purchaser before us now, if that, if that doesn't work out, then the Redevelopment Authority, from what I understand you're saying, is sort of has free rein to deal with anybody they want. But I don't believe that's true. I think the purpose of the memorandum of understanding is that you've set certain guidelines, certain standards for your agent, the Redevelopment Authority, to work with. And whoever they sign a deal with, if anybody, has got to be with those same thoughts in mind. That it's going to be limited as to use, that it's going to be limited as to completion time and the other factors that are in the MOU. So just because the guy that may be in front of us today, maybe that doesn't work out. That doesn't mean that the Redevelopment Authority has free rein to deal with anybody they want. They still have that memorandum of understanding that sets the parameters within which you direct them to act and limit their actions.
And then my next question is, and this came up with a pilot. If, if, if this particular purchaser doesn't want to agree to a pilot, what's, what, you know, what would be the recourse? I mean, would, would this still go through? Would this not go through? And even if he does agree to a pilot, does the city have the legal recourse to insist that he, that he follows through this commitment to follow, to, 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 you know, to meet the pilot requirements?
So, so Counselor, to answer the two-part question, so the purchase and sale agreement would, if the purchase and sale agreement was to a nonprofit organization, that agreement would have to include the pilot. But the pilot would be a matter of contract law as opposed to real estate taxes.
So it is enforceable?
It would be enforceable. That's correct.
Okay. And then, um, right now, there is an application with CPA for more funding for the Armory. In the event that this property were to be transferred to the RDA, would that or that or those applications automatically be withdrawn? Has anybody, has that been thought of at all in this process?
Well, I think the answer to that partly is that CPC funds can be used by private agencies, by the city, or by private individuals. Perhaps the prospective buyer of the Armory could apply for CPC funds and he'd be entitled to do so. And CPC would have to make a judgment whether he was eligible for funds.
But would the city have to withdraw their application for the private developer to, to try and get the funding?
I, I don't know. That, that would be a procedural question for CPC to answer. I, I don't know. I'm sorry.
So, so Counselor Dion, I, I would believe that that would be correct. There is also a CPC approval that goes back a few years for which the monies have not been spent. I would believe that would also revert back to the CPC funding source. I'm trying to find it right now on my notes as to when that was, but.
Yeah, I think I had it one time too, but I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I thought I sent it to you guys at one point. Yeah, unfortunately I don't have it in front of me, but I believe there is an old CPC award that hasn't been spent down. Would, I would theoretically would revert back because it would no longer be.
Is that, is that the fifty thousand dollar award for vegetation?
I'm not sure, Counsel. If you would like, I will look back at my notes at the office tomorrow. But I do remember that there was a particular one that hasn't been spent down.
No, that's okay. I, I also have it somewhere, but I just don't have it at my fingertips at the moment either. Now, my last concern, which is kind of, for me, a, a big concern. We had sent this to Corporation Council for an opinion in regard to the park board's role or non-role in this entire situation. In his conclusion, he wrote that in an effort to avoid any potential disputes or legal challenges, he would advise the Board of Park Commissioners to comply with the requirements of fifteen A by providing the city council with notice that use of the Armory is no longer required by the park board. So I think that's something that we should have in hand prior to making any transfers. I mean, you know, if he, I, I think any risk of legal challenges or disputes, we, we don't want to be there. And that would require them having a meeting, taking a vote and then issuing whatever documentation they needed to issue. So I don't know if, you know, that would lead us to ultimately table this matter, if we could put it as a condition of the transfer or how that would be handled. But I just feel that's something that, that needs to be dealt with prior to any final vote, determination as to whether we're going to transfer the property or not. And with that, I yield. That's my last thing.
Bill Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think part of the answer to that question is, yeah, you could put that as a condition. You could directly Redevelopment Authority that they understand that they shouldn't dispose of the property without the park board's blessing. On the other hand, you, you have the, the Corporation Council's opinion. I'm going to give you a different opinion because I'm a lawyer as well and maybe he and I don't agree on this. But I don't believe that you'll find any precedent for the thought that the park board can trump the city council. The city council owns that real estate. City council, when I read the ordinance, gave the park board the authority to deal with it as long as the city owns it. All the city has to do now is say, park board, thank you for your service. We're not going to own this anymore. We're selling it out to somebody else. Or was giving it to the Redevelopment Authority to transfer a title to a developer. Thanks for your service, but it's not under your jurisdiction. It's not your concern anymore. And I think that's a perfectly legitimate position to take. And as to a lawsuit that might ensue, I don't think the park board's going to sue the city council. I would hope not.
I would hope not also, but, you know, I was just basing it on his conclusion and wasn't sure which direction we should or shouldn't go in with that, but.
I think you should go in my direction.
I like your direction. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dion. Counselor Pereira.
Well, there's a couple of things that I'll add to this. Number one, the RDA is responsible for the city's urban renewal plan. This falls within the renewal plan. The gentleman that is purchasing the building that owns the other two is Brian Tebow. And that was in an article in the Herald News, if people would have read it. Also with the LLCs, you go on the state secretary of state's website and you can find out everybody that is on there. I think that the vetting is done by the RDA when you're looking at someone who wants to come in and potentially buy a piece of property. I, I couldn't hear Mrs. Sahadi when you, when you spoke of what this gentleman owns owes in taxes. What was the amount?
Um, so Counselor, I, I don't know what he owes in taxes on any of the properties at this particular point. The city of Pawtucket is closed, so I can only tell you what the assessed value is. The city of Wind Socket is closed, so I can only tell you what the tax bill is. And as far as Keene, New Hampshire, we did speak to the gentleman today. And he did talk about his outstanding tax bills, but we didn't, we were not able to confirm that with the city of Keene, New Hampshire. Again, no one answered the phone there, so I'm making an assumption that they may not be working either as a result of COVID. So as I indicated earlier, I can do some additional legwork tomorrow and maybe find some email addresses to the appropriate departments and send emails to these communities and hopefully receive a response from them if they have remote access into their financial system.
Well, I think that the RDA should do the vetting and look into that. Obviously, we want to make sure that he has the finances to do what needs to be done. But I would also caution everyone that this development that is being proposed here is similar to developments that this gentleman has developed in other communities. And it's an event center where he would have a craft show or weddings or other things like that. Remember, we've been in COVID since March and things have been shut down and large people can't gather. So maybe if he owes taxes, maybe he couldn't pay these taxes because, you know, things had been shut down. Maybe he's applied for some type of money to help him with his business like other places have. I can respect my colleague, Counselor Kilby, for wanting this to go to the Real Estate Committee. But, you know, when we spoke about that in our briefings with the mayor, the Real Estate Committee would have to put out a bid if they, they're going to sell it. And the bid that would come in would be from anybody with any kind of development that they wanted to do. What I find harmful when we sold the schools, what I find is that, you know, the Real Estate Committee sold them and Counsel Kilby was, was there at the time. But they didn't have the follow-through. You sell them and you move on, where the RDA, I think, has the ability to follow through and stay connected. And, and I would also like to hear from Mrs. Page, who works as the director now of the redevelopment. I thought that she was going to be online. I'm not sure, Mr. President, if she's this phone number. That's on our website.
No, that's, that's John Coughlin.
Okay, but I've got to say that, you know, with the Redevelopment Authority that we have in place, I have the utmost of respect for Mr. Marshall, who does financial planning, Ms. Madeiras, who's a vice president of a bank, Mr. Gonzales, who owns several businesses within the community, smaller businesses, Crunch and Mr. and Mrs. Shear and Juice Cafe, and Mr. Erickson, who has a larger business. I think we have, you know, four dynamic individuals on that board that if this doesn't go through or there's a problem, we're going to get it back. The only thing that I would question is, you know, the nonprofit status. If this gentleman has buildings in other communities and they are LLCs and he's paying taxes, then why does he not pay taxes here? Why would we give a payment in lieu of taxes? We have several nonprofits in this community and we have tried. I remember Counsel Long tried diligently to get pilot programs with so many of the nonprofits we have, where you have CEOs making three hundred thousand dollars, but the city gets no pilot, even though we're supplying services of, you know, medical services or, or police services and, and every service to some of these nonprofits. So I would say that they pay taxes. If he's going to pay, you know, a, a payment in lieu of taxes, well, why should he if he's a nonprofit and we can't get other nonprofits to do it? I would scratch that out and that he would, the private developer is deemed to pay taxes on the value of the property. That's the only thing that I would look at. But I think going to the redevelopment, that's where they're going to vet him. And that's where things are going to happen. Going to the Real Estate Committee, they're not going to sell it, so then it's going to come back to us again. And sometimes, you know, you have people that want to do things in Fall River, but when they see that it's so difficult to get something through, they end up leaving. I had a business that said, you know what, I just, I can't deal anymore and then left. So the way I look at it, I'm ready to send it to the Redevelopment Authority because I think that they're the ones that are going to vet it, work on it. And if people want to change one thing in the memorandum of understanding, I personally would not like to see payment in lieu of taxes. I would just like to say that they paid the, the taxes on the value. We all pay the taxes on the value of our property. I would go with that, but I have the utmost confidence in the Redevelopment Authority that we have. And let them do the vetting and, and get the work done. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Kenny, do you want to speak on Counselor Pereira's point?
If I may, please. I, I think that she's exactly right. This issue of follow-through is critical and, and I know exactly what she's saying. The, the council disposes of property and, and that's it. Their involvement's over. By contrast, the Redevelopment Authority, and you'll see in the memorandum of understanding, they enter into a land disposition agreement with this developer. That disposition agreement has landmarks that they follow. Has he accomplished certain tasks within a certain period of time? And, and has he complied with the intent of, of, of the MOU? And that follows right up into project completion. So they're following this throughout the entire process. It's not just over when the closing is over. And so I think that's critically important. And frankly, I, I don't see where the city council or the staff, or the city hall is in a position to do that. The Redevelopment Authority now has a full-time staff person in addition, as you said, to a first-class board. So I think they've got the capacity to do the kind of follow-up that the land disposition agreement mandates. The other thing, I just wonder if maybe Mary could talk more about the, the pilot. This MOU says that they're going to be required to enter into a pilot if they're found not to be taxable. I, I, I don't know too much about pilots, but I don't know why the amount of the pilot can't be basically what they would have paid in real estate taxes. I, may, maybe Mary can answer that. I don't know.
Mike can speak to that if you'd like.
If, if we can. No problem, Counsel. I think it's appropriate to, we don't know how this individual is going to take title. This is all, this is all speculation at best right now. Okay? I just want to urge the council on that. We know what nonprofits are capable of doing. We know what private entities have to do. I, 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 I don't want to make assertions in terms of what, how this individual is going to take title. But the MOU does state that he would be paying taxes in lieu, payments in lieu of taxes. How that's going to be determined, we don't know. But we also don't know if he's going to be a nonprofit at this point. So I just want to urge everybody on that. Thank you. Before I acknowledge some of the, I see you, Counsel Palatier, and I know Counsel Kilby wants to speak. Before I acknowledge you guys again, I'd like to acknowledge Counsel Akademi hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a couple of things. You know, I, I think I'm in favor of moving this to the Redevelopment Authority for a number of reasons. First reason is that we're going to have DHCD or need DHCD approval if the property is sold less than, than the assessed value. As many people in the community know, our track record for selling property is probably a thousand dollars to five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars at best for some of the properties. If we can, if we can get some type of payment for a, a building at the assessed value, that's, that's an absolute win for us. Second of all, I, I think it covers all of our concerns. Number one, we have a reverter clause if the, the developer, whoever the developer is. And I think obviously we know who the developer will be. If he does not live up to the agreement, you know, the, the Redevelopment Authority has the, the right to take back the property, at which point the city then acquires the property back. So there's some protection there. The other piece, and, and I want to talk a little bit more about it, but the other piece is the right for first refusal if, if they decide to, to sell the property. We also have some protection in here, as Counsel Pereira had mentioned, the concerns of nonprofits. So if, if the developer takes this property, he isn't, he is not-for-profit, then we would have an agreement in place from a contractual standpoint where he would be paying, having, making payments in lieu of taxes. So we will receive some type of tax payments or obviously payments in lieu of taxes on this property. And, and I'd hope that we'd have that listed in the agreement for a, a number of years over the, over the course. So I, I, I think when we're looking at trying to get this property developed, I think we're all in agreement that, that the property does need to get developed. I, I think the administration and all the councils who have voiced their concerns at the briefings, I, I think this MOU has captured a lot of what we have talked about in these briefings. I think this MOU has captured a lot of what we have talked about in these briefings and some of our concerns. So I think to me, it makes sense. I don't know that it needs to go to Real Estate Committee. I think we should, as the city planner has suggested, you know, transfer this over to the redevelopment authority, allow them to manage this property and sell the property as our agents and hope for, you know, work with them to make sure that this is getting developed. My question, though, however, is if we could just talk about Section 8, Item Number 6, the right of first refusal. I know in my briefing, Counselor Dion had some concerns about, you know, 20 years down the line and just having some protection with regards to this property. One of the items I had suggested was that we get some language in there for a right of first refusal so that if anything changes with this property, we would have the option to purchase this back. Now, obviously, it would be probably a fair market value at that point, but nonetheless, we would still have the ability. The language that's listed in this MOU would suggest that, and I'll read it, that if the private developer ever sells the Armory in the future, that the city shall have the right of first refusal to acquire the Armory back from the private developer. If the language is going to stay like that, I think if, it needs to just be amended to read that if the private developer ever anticipates or is looking to sell, not sells, because at that point, he's already sold the property, so we can't take it back. So I think we've got to clean up that language to say that if they are considering selling the property, that we would have the right of first refusal. What I had suggested was more along the line of chaplain. So with the chaplain for the open space, you know, folks often get a discount real estate payment. So they only pay 25% of their real estate tax if it's chaplain. We automatically get a.
Mr. President.
Your point of clarification?
I'm sorry, you're probably more wisdom than I on this, but chaplain has to do with forest land.
Yeah, I recognize that. I'm just trying to mimic the.
You know, that has to do with woods, forests, you know, if you're going to donate. Whenever you speak, Sean, I listen very, very intently because you know your stuff. So but chaplain is, this has nothing to do with chaplain.
Well, if you let me, if you let me finish. So what I was trying to do was mimic the chaplain. So I'm just trying to explain the chaplain to everybody. So chaplain is for open space, farming, things of that nature. So you get a discounted portion for the open space and it's got to maintain that. So you pay 25% of your real estate taxes. However, if the person who owns that for chaplain decides that they're going to develop it, the city or the municipality has the right of first refusal. So I was looking to do something similar to that. And I'd like to see this tweaked where if the private developer, similar to a chaplain, decides that they are not going to use this property for public use, that's when we would have the right for first refusal, similar to chaplain. So the minute they're going to look to develop it and take the chaplain off, they've got to, they've get a rollback in taxes and the municipality has first right of refusal on that portion. So that's what I would be looking to see get amended. So if the developer decides that he doesn't want to have it for public use and he wants to then develop it for apartments, that's the point that would trigger the right of first refusal for the city so that we can maintain it for public purposes. And that's where I was, where I was going with the suggestion of the right of first refusal when we were in the briefing. So I don't feel like that necessarily captures that in Section 8 of, Section 8 of Subsection 6. Because it's just, it's solely on if they feel, the way that language reads is it's solely if they intend to sell it. But if there's an intent to do something other than public, for the public purpose, then I think at that point, we should be able to purchase that property back because the intent here is to make sure that the property is developed and is used for the public. So and I think Counselor Dion's concerns, rightfully so, was to maintain that moving forward. And the only way we can control that would be to ensure that if they, if the private developer ever decides to do something other than for public use, then that's when we would be able to, if the city, whoever the city council at that time and the administration is at that time feels that it's in the best interest of the city to purchase that property back, we have the right to go ahead and do that.
So through the President.
Attorney Kenny, if you can speak on Counselor Kadim's point, I believe. I know Attorney Coughlin is here as well. Attorney Coughlin, I don't know if you can hear us.
I can. I don't know if you can. Can you hear me? I apologize. I was having a Zoom issue, but I can hear you.
Yes, I don't know if either you or Attorney Kenny want to speak specifically on this issue that Counselor Kadim has.
Well, could I just say, as you may know, Attorney Coughlin had about, you know, 10 minutes to write that addendum. So I think maybe let him address the issue. Your typical right of first refusal is needless to say, a little more elaborate than that. And that's because of the time allowed. But maybe he could address Mr. Counselor Kadim's question a little more directly.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to remember, this is an MOU between the city and the redevelopment authority. This is not the final land disposition agreement with the developer. So this requires us to put a right of first refusal in that land disposition agreement. But obviously, that right of first refusal is going to be much more detailed. It's going to have, you know, if he intends to sell, he'll have to give notice. There'll be a certain window where the city has to respond. They'll, you know, it'll be more flushed out than it is in this MOU. I hear what Counselor Kadim is saying and I think, I just want to be cautious that we use the right terms. When we say public use, he's turning this into an event center, which means I think it's eligible for private people to rent for, you know, parties or events. Or I'm not sure that it's an entirely a public use. It's a private venue that's available for people to use. But I hear what you're saying. I think maybe the approach is that if he wants to change the use of the building from what it was sold for, that that would trigger the right of first refusal. I'd be a little bit cautious about using public use, but I understand the concept. And I think you, yeah, you could trigger the right of first refusal. The land disposition agreement is going to require that it be used for an event center and other related uses. If he wants to convert it to another use, like condominiums or something like that, I think you could add language that would trigger the right of first refusal at that point or some option to buy it back.
No, and that's why, that's why I rely on the attorneys to come up with the legal language with regards to that. So, you know, and I'm in agreement with it. You know, I see the private event center as public use and I know what you're saying. So maybe it's a change of use, right? So that's truly what I'm trying to identify is I don't want to be put in a situation where we're selling this for, you know, with the intent to have it as a, whether it's private or public, an event center where the community can go in there and it's being utilized while privately held as opposed to in five or 10 years and shut down and developed for apartments, right? So I think if we can have that use change in there, that from my standpoint, would get my support in that. And then just in terms of the MOA for, from the city to the redevelopment authority, I would just want to clean it up. And I don't know that we need the entire language for the right of first refusal. But as opposed to saying when the developer intends to sell, that it's when the developer has, is looking to have a change, a use of change or a change of use for the property.
Is that a question for Attorney Coughlin?
That's just, that's just my recommendation to the administration. I don't know that it's really for Attorney Coughlin. You know, if they're in agreement with getting that language changed, then I'd support it tonight. If there is no agreement to get that language, as I had suggested, then I won't support it because I think it's important to make sure that we've got that safety net in there.
I think I just, and I just, just for clarity, the right of first refusal, if he intends to sell, is very straightforward because that means there's a buyer, there's a purchase price, and then the city has the ability to match that price and buy the property back. If there's a change in use, that would be a violation of the land disposition agreement, which would trigger the reverter back to the redevelopment authority, which would then trigger the reverter back to the city. I'm not sure that the right of first refusal would kick in on a change in use because there is no, there's no sale, there's no transaction there. So I think we have.
Where would you, where would you find that if he has a change of use, that the reverter clause would kick in?
So in the land disposition agreement, it's going to require that he develop the property for a particular use. And that if he doesn't do that, then the redevelopment authority has the right to get the property back. He'd have to come back to us for a change in use.
But the downtown, I guess my question, my question would be, it says, "The private developer shall renovate the Armory in a manner consistent with the downtown urban renewal plan." The downtown urban renewal plan allows for housing, right? Market rate housing?
But I think it's more, if you look at AA subsection 2, section 8.2, it's more specific than that. It has to be for an event center, not for anything under the urban renewal. But I understand what you're saying. And I think, I mean, maybe the way we can get at it is if there's a, if there's a change in use, then the city has an option to purchase it at whatever fair market value is at that point or something. It just, it wouldn't be a right of first refusal.
Yeah, no, I missed that. I tend to agree with you. I see it now.
Yeah, so this really, it has to be limited to just an event center, so.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I missed it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know a couple of the counselors want to speak again. I just want to speak on this for a quick second before everybody else weighs in for a second time. I too am in favor of this. I think that this is an opportunity for the city to take full advantage of underutilized or a nonutilized property at all whatsoever and try to make it something that it isn't, which is nothing. This city, for many years prior to my tenure on the city council, has had a history of having projects before them and then denying them. And they continue to sit there. And in the real estate world, we call these white elephants. Impossible to sell, hard to sell, unable to move, unable to market. I think there's been a lot of work that the mayor's office has done. I think there's a lot of work that Mr. Kenny has done to look at this as a viable development project in our downtown that an individual is going to spend millions of dollars to develop. Now, we have before us an MOU and I don't think that there is anything wrong with when this comes down to the city council. There is, you know, specific suggestions or amendments that you want to make to the order with respect to the MOU. I think this is an opportunity that the council has right now, a lot of work that the mayor did. Now, I just want to make it clear. My conversations with the mayor have been pretty clear about this. Initially, when the administration and the mayor wanted to dispose of this, they wanted to see this as the redevelopment authority getting more money than where we are at right now. They wanted to see the redevelopment authority get a certain percentage. We went, I went back sort of after speaking to a couple of counselors and said, "Mayor, I don't think that there's really going to be much support behind the redevelopment authority, getting it for a dollar and liquidating it and the city not receiving any of the proceeds." I find that that was one of the bigger takeaways when they went back and did the MOU, spoke to some different communities and is looking at a viable project here that might not present itself again. I don't sense that there's anything, you know, necessarily going on that's wrong here. I think that this is just a effort that the mayor has and an opportunity that is being presented to him. Because let's be, let's be frank with each other, right? There's not a lot of people who are going to be developing buildings like this. It's one large building that has a basketball court that takes up a majority of it and a couple of other floors with some offices that it's not an ideal real estate building to look at and market. And the role that the redevelopment authority has here isn't to do anything but essentially broker the real estate transaction. They're brokering it. They're going to be reimbursed for some of their attorney fees and their expenses to conduct a real estate closing. But I'm fairly confident in the board, the redevelopment authority. We have a great board at the redevelopment authority, which I know we all agree with them. I don't think any counselor discounted the fact that we have a great redevelopment authority board. I just feel that we need to have a little bit of hope and take a risk here and put the ability of due diligence in the hands of the redevelopment authority who has solid contributors there, you know, from, I see a counselor, from, you know, from, you know, Mr. Kenny to banking representatives. I'm sorry, Mr. Marshall, who does finance. And as Counselor Pereira said, you know, I'm comfortable with this not going to the Real Estate Committee and converting this to the redevelopment authority. I understand that there's less roadblocks municipal-wise that we have to be followed. If it did go to the city council, the redevelopment authority is stopping those benchmarks and stopping all these things. And they're, they're trying to broker the deal. And this is something, and y'all know, I haven't always agreed with things that have come down from this mayor, any mayor. But this is just something that I feel that if we don't give this a shot, we may be looking at another police station that has sat there dormant for years and we could have only said to ourselves, "Oh, Don, we really should have done it before." That's all I'll say. So before I acknowledge, and that's all I'll say. So I'm in support of this transfer and I hope that, you know, I won't be in favor of sending it to the Real Estate Committee. Counselor Kilby.
Yes, just really quick. I respect all your comments, I'll submit to President. But there's three lawyers here, Attorney Kenny, Attorney Coughlin, who came on board, and myself. So all of the points that Counselor Kadim brought up are very good points. And it's your real estate 101. When you, when you take that first class in law school, you, everything in terms of real estate has to be in writing. So the concerns that he brought up, Counselor Kadim, seat one. Not seat one right now, but actually, the only way to, you know, to, what's that? What's that?
Okay.
I'm sorry. The only way for his points to be enforced for this, this is to take a look back and for this to be in writing. So I'll go along with the committee. I'm sorry if I made this a big issue, but that's, it's a very great historic building and there's a lot of issues that have been brought up tonight. And I feel I for one am not really ready to push this through tonight. And again, real estate 101 has to be in writing. Back to the table a little bit, take a step back. I'm not necessarily saying that it has to go to real estate. Table it till the next meeting. Let Corporation Counsel, Rumsey weigh in a little bit more. Let Mr. Kenny weigh in to, let Mr. Coughlin, who came on a little late, which is fine, weigh a little more. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier, followed by Counselor Pereira.
Thank you. You know, you want to transfer, all well and good, there's no problem there. But if we don't want to, why don't we just ask the RDA to look into it and instead of sending it to the Real Estate Committee and vent it? They said they got extra help up there and they can vent it and then come back to us. So here's what we think and here's what we can do rather than transfer it now, but transfer it after we get all the answers. You know, I mean, it sounds, makes sense to me. I don't know how long we'll take to vent and come back with the answers, but it's a pretty good organization. But would they want to do it if they don't have the transfer? It's just an idea. I don't know if they'll go along with it or not. But if they come up with the right answers, then we transfer it over. Just an idea. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pereira.
I know that this is just an MOU. It's a basic thing so that we know that the city is going to get it back if the individual sells because it's an icon in the city. And I would hate to see somebody buy it and knock it down and I wouldn't want to see that. One of the concerns that I have too is that that belonged to the veterans. And I would talk to the RDA, and I have talked to members of the RDA, saying, "If you do get this, I really would like the developer to understand the importance to veterans that we have in our community and have a room whereby veterans could be able to meet because they don't have a place." That's, that's something that I would share with them. I certainly wouldn't put it in an MOU. However, I, you know, I have met with Sarah Page, Mrs. Sarah Page, who came on board as the new economic development director. And I did reach out and meet with her and welcome her to the city. She is with us, and I would like to hear from her. You know, this developer that has had conversations with her. I know that the last time, you know, they, the RDA was going to have a meeting on the Wednesday, kind of moved things. And then we waited two weeks for this meeting. And I would just want to know, how is, are not making a decision on this? Is that going to affect what that, the economic development division is, is doing, what the RDA is doing? If we could hear from her, Mr. President?
Sure. She's here. Ms. Paige, welcome. I think this is the first time that you have been before this, this body. So, uh, welcome. And I know your position isn't relatively new, but new to some of us and to the community. So welcome. And if you could ask, answer Counselor Pereira's question.
Well, thank you. I tried to be on earlier and wasn't getting in, so I'm glad that I was able to be part of this. And, um, we're very interested in playing that role. And I think, um, a delay in a decision isn't a huge problem. But I think that everyone has been working with this developer. He's ready to work with us and that it would be great if we could move this forward. And I think I agree with so many of you that it's an incredible opportunity for the city and to get this property fun, you know, paying taxes or a pilot and really being useful and helping with the revitalization of the downtown. So, um, I just would urge you to, um, find a way to move this forward.
Attorney Kenny?
I'm really happy. I should also say, I'm really happy to be here. I'm really excited to be in this new role, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, and we're happy that you're here. Attorney Kenny, I know you wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think, I think the bottom line is this, you've got a guy knocking on the door with his checkbook in his hand. You've got two teammates here. You've got the city council, and you've got the redevelopment authority. One of them says, we have the freedom to go and talk to this guy today. We don't have to delay. We can start negotiating now. What are you going to do? I say, let the teammate that can do it quickest go to him. What do you got to lose? In a few months, if it doesn't work out, you get it back. The, the option is to detail it to death. You can talk about every little tweak that you want to make. Time is going to pass by. This guy's interested, but who knows how long he's interested. It just seems to me that you've got to have a little faith that the redevelopment authority, as your agent and your partner, is going to do the right thing and consult with you going forward. Just because you transfer title to them doesn't mean that they clip their phone lines or throw away their cell phones or be, you know, unwilling to, to listen to your suggestions and, and your, your concerns. So that's, uh, that's what I, oh, I also wanted to say, it's a pleasure to appear before the council. This is my first chance here on my second tour of duty as city planner. And I, I thank all of you for confirming my appointment, and this is the best job in the world, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, guys. Any further questions on this? This is only up to discussion.
Refer to full counsel?
Unnecessary. It's already in full counsel right now. We've already completed the discussion. Counselor Kadim?
Uh, just, just the point of information. I know it's been, uh, said a couple of times, but the Armory can't be demolished. There is a, a deed restriction on it because of the use of CPA. So, uh, no developer can come in and demolish it. They've got to maintain the building, just for the right, just for the community.
Thank you, counselor. And last thing I'll say, and I know it's going to be before us, I have all the faith in the world in Attorney Coughlin, the redevelopment authority, our planner and our corporation counsel, to make sure that their wishes that this council has, this, that the city council has put forward here tonight is put into the agreements. However, uh, on the opposite side, I also respect the opinion of an attorney like Attorney Kilby and, and other counselors who want to see this vetting process be vetted a little bit more, and I, and I respect that totally. But I, I'm of a little different opinion. I, I think we should, um, we should give this a chance. Because the, I don't think buyers like this hang around forever, but he may. I don't know. And again, and also I want to say for the record, I've never met this person. I've never done a real estate transaction with him. Don't know who he is from a hole in a wall. Never spoke to him. But based on what the mayor said and the due diligence that he's done, it's, it's a, it's a chance I'm willing to take. Hearing no further discussion on this, this will be in full counsel, so no referral, uh, referral is needed. I'd like to take this time to thank Attorney Kenny for being here, Attorney Coughlin, Ms. Paige. Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to release you from our meeting at this point, so take care.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Got to remove them, so. Here, and there they go. Right, there we go. All right. Next item on our agenda is a resolution to discuss the funding for the construction of a storage area facility. Um, I will say this, um, just for the purposes of not really going into a long debate on this. The mayor did call me late this afternoon, and Mrs. Sahadi, maybe you can give us a very brief update on this. He did indicate, and I know this is Counselor Lee's resolution, I believe. Yeah, it is. It's Counselor Lee's resolution. The mayor said that they're really not prepared to speak in depth about this because they're still doing their due diligence. But Mrs. Sahadi?
Motion to table, Council President?
Uh, I can. Motion to table? It would be appropriate, but I don't know if Mrs. Sahadi wants to give us a very brief update in terms of what's happening.
Motion to table?
You could just unmute yourself, Mrs. Sahadi.
Sorry. Um, so yes, thank you, Council President. So we have looked at the three pieces of property that we are renting. One for the facilities management department, one for traffic, and one for solid waste, with a total rental cost of $62,400 annually. We have been working with Mr. Gallagher on the size of the property that, or the size of the building that we would need to house both the vehicles for facilities and traffic as well as for the equipment that solid waste has. We have been working with, at this particular, at this particular point, we're really not prepared to speak to the total cost of a building to construct. Mr. Gallagher has been working with an estimator to estimate the total cost of a building that will be approximately 150 by 80. We've also had some discussions with Mr. Hathaway as to what the requirements will be for that building. And so as of this evening, you're correct, Counselor Lee, we're not really ready to talk about the specifics of, of the cost, what it would cost to put a storage facility up and house those three departments.
Counselor Lee, the sponsor of the resolution?
So, we're, this is, this is what we talked about two weeks ago. It's just that while, while this is going on, we, we, we have, we're in our, what, third, fourth month from the, from the time we passed the budget. So every month where we're still spending on the rental fees. So I just, I just think the clock's ticking on that. And that was the whole purpose, was to eliminate these fees or eliminate that, that expense. So, um, is there a timeline on this?
Well, um, two things. So one is that the cost of the building, depending on whether we can put it on our own land, so at this point, we're, we're assuming that we'll be able to erect a building on our own land, is going to be substantially more on an annual basis than the 62,000 that we're currently paying in rent. And that is the concern, which is why we want to be sure that we do our due diligence because we would need to bond for this building. You know, I'm not sure what the cost would be, but we, we would need to bond for this building, and we would be paying for this building over 20 years. So not only would we, you're right, not be paying this rental, but we would be paying more than the rental on the repayment of the debt. And we would be paying it for a number of years. So we want to make sure that the building that we erect is the building that the city really needs for these departments. Um, and we're doing it in a logical and smart way.
Yeah, because we, we don't, I mean, the whole intent was not, the whole purpose of this was to have something built where it would be a one-time cost, and it would be obviously with the purpose of eliminating the rental fees to save. So if we're spending more to build this, then, I mean, that's not, I don't think that's what we were designing to do.
Right, exactly. And that is exactly what the issue is. So after having discussions with Mr. Gallagher and his crew in the sense of the estimator and Mr. Hathaway, if we just use a comparison to the building that the EMS department is looking to erect as well, they're a little further along in the process, we're looking at a building that will be anywhere between 1.5 and $2 million.
Okay. I, I mean, if, if it comes to that point, then I don't even think, I mean, we're going to, we're at a point where it's not, it's not going to be worth doing it.
Well, it, it, it may always be worth doing it because we may be able to, um, obviously put all of our equipment in one place. We may be able to be more efficient in certain areas. But in terms of the cost benefit right now, although we don't own the property that we're renting, the rental cost is going to be less than the repayment on the debt.
And that's the only option that we have right now? That's what, that's basically what's being said right now, or?
Well, again, we, we are working with Mr. Gallagher and the estimator. But yes, based on the requirements for a building that is 80 by 150 in terms of bathroom space. And I'm not sure what happened to Mr. Gallagher. I thought he was going to be here this evening, but Mr. Perry is, and he may be able to speak to it. But we're going to have vehicles inside a building, so there are all types of regulations that need to be followed. It's not simply putting a metal building on a cement pad. So they, oh, here he is. So they can speak better to the specifics. But it's a lot more involved than just putting up a metal building on a cement set slab.
Uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I understand what Mrs. Sahadi is saying. But in the long run, over the years, there will be a savings because it'll be a city that we own and will have to maintain it. And that, I think we have a problem with maintaining our buildings due to, you know, lack of manpower, what have you. But, you know, I, I would still like to find out what it's going to cost to be metal fab, what it's going to be cost to be stick-built. What is it going to be cost if we pay for the material and have, um, you know, a school build something like that? Like they build other things. I think there's a lot of different options that we need to look at. I just think that, you know, we've been talking about this, Counselor Pelletier and I talked about this with, you know, during the briefing and, and months ago, that we purchased all this equipment, and we need to make sure that we're able to garage this equipment. Taxpayers' money have paid for all this equipment, and then you leave it out in the weather to get rusted up. Behind DPW, that needs to be all cleaned out. If we clean that out, how much room do we have there? What can we do there? Can we put an addition on a building? Is that less expensive than erecting a new building? Is it less expensive to do it in wood or to do it in, in aluminum? We don't know. I agree with you that we don't have enough of information to go forward with it. But I think that Counselor Lee is on target, that we need to look at what other options are that we would have for a cost-saving measure. In the end, it's going to end up saving you money in the long run. So I agree. I mean, I believe that Counselor Lee made a motion to table. Did you make a motion to table, Counselor Lee?
Counsel, uh, just, just, I, I was questioning, uh, the council president at the time if that was the appropriate, uh, thing to do at the moment. But, um, I believe other counselors, uh, I think other counselors raised a hand.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have an issue. I, I certainly would make a motion to table till we had an opportunity to talk to both Mr. Perry and Mr. Gallagher, and they came forward with facts and figures of what exactly it would cost. If we don't have facts and figures, then we're spinning our wheels. I mean, it's been long enough. I would hope that we figure this out.
So I'll, I'll second that motion.
Motion to table has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Roll call on the motion to table.
Counselors Kadim?
No.
Dion? Kilby?
You have to unmute yourself.
LaLanne B. LeBeau?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
No.
Motion fails.
Kilby's vote?
I, I.
So Kilby was yes.
I, I supported that motion. I thought you blasted me out of the meeting.
We took time.
Most, motion, motion fails. Um, Counselor Pereira, you still have the floor. Do you yield?
I yield. I mean, the motion failed, so didn't pass.
Great. Counselor Kadim?
Thank you. I, I'll support a table a- after everybody has the opportunity to speak on the matter. But, um, I for one, you know, I, I, I support Counselor Lee's, you know, resolution here, and I, I agree with Counselor Pereira. I think short term, it might be, um, you know, a cost benefit analysis might, might show that it's, it's beneficial. However, not having control of the property, if ownership in, in the property changes, then we, you know, we're outside looking in, trying to figure out what we're doing with all this equipment. Um, I would also suggest, you know, that we, we get some type of request from the administration just to do a feasibility study to truly look at, um, as Counsel Pereira had mentioned, number one, what does a, a metal fab building look like? What does a, a new construction building look like? Uh, and more importantly, where I, what I think, you know, the city deserves and what that neighborhood deserves is a complete rehab of that facility over there to beautify it. That, that facility right there is, is, and we talked about this a number of times. 195 corridor is what gets people to come into Farver. And if our properties are not maintained properly and it looks like they're decrepit, nobody's going to want to stop into the city of Farver. Um, and that property has been an eyesore for a number of years, and I think it's about time that we, we really put our money behind this and, and really fix this, this facility. We're starting to invest millions and millions of dollars in, in infrastructure and equipment for DPW. I think DPW and, and those employees deserve to have a facility that is, um, you know, something that is, is comparable to other municipal buildings and that we're able to store our, our equipment in there so that we're saving money on our investments that we're putting in there. So from my standpoint, I, I, I think it's something that we need to start talking about. And I, actually, I, I think we need to stop talking about it and actually, uh, put together a feasibility study so we can start making determinations and, and decisions as to which direction we want to go in. Because I, I think we need to have something there. And if it's something that incorporates, you know, additional space for, uh, the traffic department and parks and recs so that they can, you know, uh, uh, store their, their equipment there as well, then let, let's talk about it. You know, I mean, we're, we're not afraid to, to build new schools for our city. We shouldn't be afraid to also build new buildings, uh, for our departments that need it. And I think it's been a long time coming that DPW needs to, uh, to see a, a, at least a facility that is, is, um, efficient and, and allows to manage their day-to-day operations. So that's, that's just my, my standpoint from this, uh, and, and I support Counselor Lee's, uh, resolution on this. And I think we should take it one step further. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you. John, we had talked about the prices of space building and at the, at the meeting. And, you know, it was like, uh, 130, we could do something or whatever the case may be. And all of a sudden, now we're going to 1 million, 1.5, I don't know. Uh, I asked a question about how much property you have down the incinerator. And I was told you guys got five acres of land up there. I mean, uh, do you have enough there to put a, a building up? Do you have five acres of land?
So counselors, thank you, uh, for the invite and the discussion. So the property as a whole, council, I believe, is 4.7 acres total. Obviously, the structure that stands there now takes up some of that significant amount. We do have the land in the back, uh, and then we have, uh, the most of our room is up top, uh, where you'd see our salt shed and where you first enter the yard, uh, up toward the office. So we do have room in the yard to carve out a corner, uh, to, to look at putting a building up. To your point about the 130, uh, at the time that we first started discussing this, we were talking about, you know, it was very, very vague. We were looking at a space building. We didn't know its size, what we would need. Uh, and then we started looking at the three leases we have, what kind of equipment we have there, and things of that nature. Uh, and this building has kind of, um, grown in size if it's going to house all of our equipment and allow us to do something along these lines. Uh, so the variables involved with this have changed somewhat, uh, which drives up the cost. Uh, and then something you have to keep in mind with a project like this, the purchase of a space building is, is one thing. The structure itself, uh, the, the infrastructure that goes. Uh, the structure itself, uh, the, the infrastructure that goes into that building, what it requires to run, uh, and the site work that needs to be done to put the building on, uh, is, is also a cost that has to be added into the project. So, um, again, you know, as Counselor Kadeem said, and I appreciate all your words, Counselor, um, I, I believe the DPW does need an investment. Um, and we've talked about this for a long time. Um, and it's never become a reality. Um, that building does need work, uh, and I'd be, um, excited to get started on that work. But i- until we're really serious about it at this point, again, it was just a preliminary conversation. Let's look at what it would cost to put up a building or get a building, uh, and let's have that discussion again. Um, so that's the point we're at now. Um, and again, you know, as Mrs. Sahadi said, I, I'd hate to throw out numbers, uh, that aren't accurate. Um, if it's a feasibility study, if it's more accurate information you're looking for, then we can come back with that, you know, at a later date for sure.
Well, you know, you, we talked about buying land and all, whatever. But if you've got four and a half acres up there, there gotta be someplace you can stretch that building, uh, without us looking for a piece of property that we get a body. And, uh,
Well, well,
I jumped so high, I guess.
Well, Counselor, to, to your point as well, um, I mean, the ongoing discussion is, is that where our future home is going to be? Right? That's part of this discussion, right? Yeah, you know, there's been kind, you know, kind of back and forth. Do we stay at Lewiston Street if we're going to put up a building? Do we do it there? Do we move it somewhere else? Uh, do we look for another parcel of land somewhere else in the city? Uh, you know, so those are all things that have been on the table. Um, if you're asking me that, you know, do we have the room to put up a building in that yard? Yes, we do. Uh, we could carve ourselves out an area in that property, uh, to put up a building. But again, you know, between the administration, the council, uh, a- and all of us together, we need to decide if that's where we stay. Uh, and if that's going to be our future home, then by all means, I'd love for the council's support on an investment in the future to, to work on that property and get it to, to a point where it should be. And, and what the residents and, as Counsel Kadeem said, the, the people who drive in and out of the city, um, can look at and be proud of.
Well, I feel that we shouldn't have two places. You got a place down there, you got the land, put it all together. I mean, you're gonna have one over here and the parking, the trucks someplace else. It'd be nice if you have it all together. But, you know, if you look at it, uh, the acreage that you got and where the buildings are, somebody could determine what they could put up there, you know, you or somebody else, uh, and I think that's the way to go. I mean, uh, instead of you going to two places checking on this or that, I mean, you can go there. Uh, you still got the gas pumps there. I'm, I'm sure you may upgrade them with, uh, more vehicles there. And, uh, I think it's a good investment. I think it should be done. All the new equipment that's been bought in the city, uh, waste treatment plant, uh, traffic, you guys, the plows. We got a lot of good equipment. We spent a lot of money in the city of Far River. And to say that, uh, we're going to drag our feet on this, especially when we possibly have the land to do the job, I, I mean, I think it's crazy. And that's the way to go. And I think we and you and everybody else in the city that's got some do this, look at it and come down, look, I think we can do it here. We got the property. It's like the fire station, uh, the mayor wanted to buy at the time a piece of property. And I said, I'm not going to support this unless you tell the people of Far River, uh, we got a piece, but I want to buy a piece for 1.2 million. The mayor changed his mind. We ended up putting it there on our property. We got the property. That's the way to go, I think, anyway. So with that, think about it. I'm sure my colleagues will. And, uh, everybody else that's got something to do with it, come up and do the right thing with that idea.
Thank you. Anything further? Is there a motion to table? Counsel Pereira?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know they built a metal fab building on Route 6 near the, um, bowling alley across from, um, the gates of the city or what have you. Mr. Perry, did you ever connect with that man? How much did he say?
I did. So, uh, that's Steel Smith LC LLC. Uh, they were the company that put that up. Um, I did speak to him. And again, the structure itself, uh, it runs anywhere from $10 to $12 a square foot. That's the purchase, the structure. That doesn't include any of the infrastructure. So that's the foundation, the site work, uh, the plumbing, the electric, the heat, all of the stuff that go along with the building council. So then that's where your price per square foot starts to rise. Uh, to buy the structure is one thing, you know, if you're looking at a 20 by 30 foot.
Structure was?
Sorry?
What did he say the cost was for the structure? Just the structure?
Just the structure is $10 to $12 per square foot. And then, so you have to determine what size building you need. So in our preliminary work on this and what we have done, we've looked at trying to house everything. We need a, around 170, uh, by 80 foot square building. Uh, so that would be quite a building. Um, but that would house everything, give us room to work and, and be able to do that. So that cost has risen a little bit, but then, you know, again, you know, all of the infrastructure that goes with it.
Well, and I agree with you. It depends on the infrastructure. If you want to have windows, how many garage doors are going? If you're going to have air conditioning or not, and if you're going to have it where, you know, it's just strictly for storage of vehicles, then, you know, you need to have a fire suppression system as well, and that's going to cost.
Or water separator, yep.
Yeah, perhaps we should put this to the committee on public works so that they can be working with. I don't even know if this is your jurisdiction on Mr. Gallagher's because it's a facility. So is that Mr. Gallagher or you or a combination of you both working together?
So, so I'll say it like this, um, we are working on this together. And as most of you know, um, Mr. Gallagher and myself sometimes blend into one person. Um, you know, if you're not sure who to call, you call one or the other, and either one of us will get you in touch with what you need. So we are working on this together. Um, I would be glad to attend the Committee on Public Works if, eh, meeting, and I'm sure Mr. Gallagher would as well. He's here with me now. Um, he's having some technical issues, um, Council President. That's why we're sharing the computer tonight, just so you know. He, he did intend on attending the whole time. Uh, so yeah, I'd be more than glad to sit down and really vet this out. Um, again, if we're going to do something, let's do it right, as we've said in the past, and, and, and do it so that we don't have to look back and wish we had done something else.
I mean, I, I just think we've talked about it and talked about it, and I agree with Counsel Pelletier. But we really need to do it. I mean, a 50 by 20 by 16 is 74,000. So if you double that, 148,000. So if it's going to cost us 300,000, I don't think a 1.5 million dollars, I think that's way off the ballpark, even if you added, um, different things in. Um, but I would just, I don't even know who chairs public works off the top of my head. I have a list at my desk, um, but not here. I don't know who chairs that and what the feelings would be. But just, you know, to, to get moving along and help out, we have to work in a partnership with our department heads. And I know you go above and beyond with doing everything that you do. I know Mr. Gallagher's been going crazy with, with dealing with the lighting situation, and he's moving on that. So, you know, if there's something that the council subcommittee can assist with, that's what we're here for. This just needs to get done because taxpayers have spent a lot of money, uh, you know, on, on equipment, and it's not fair to have things, uh, getting ruined. But, uh, with that, I, I just don't know if Counsel Kadeem said he was going to change his vote to table it. Um, uh, if we just need another motion because it was a 4-4 vote. Madam Clerk, what's your question?
Um, Counselor, you have a motion to table? Are you motioning? Is that your motion? Because I think Counsel Kadeem has spoke already.
Is there anybody else has, wants to speak on the item?
I don't, I don't believe so. No other people? Motion to table has been made by Counsel Kadeem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Roll call on the table.
On the motion to table, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalali Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Backline.
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finances has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Roll call on adjournment.
Adjournment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalali Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier? Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Our meeting is adjourned. It is, uh, 8:21. Far River City Council Full Council will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Yeah.
Kilby?
Here.
Lalali Laboe?
Yeah.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
And President Ponti?
Here. Uh, since we're not in the chamber, uh, but we are in our own homes, um, if we can take a moment, if you'd like to stand, uh, for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. And a salute to the flag, which I know everybody has, but I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation under God. Indis治able with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. All right, uh, this Far River City Council Committee, uh, this Far River City Council Full Council meeting is being held through, uh, remote, uh, Zoom due to the increased cases of COVID-19. It has been elected that we resume our meetings in the, you know, meeting by meeting to decide where the cases are at. And at this point, we have elected to take this meeting and have it be done through a Zoom communication. Uh, all councils are here with the exception of Counselor Peckham, who had a work, um, issue that he had to address. So, uh, Counselor Peckham, um, will, will try to make it if he can, but if he can't, uh, he had an issue at work that he needed to address. Um, first item on our agenda, Madam Clerk, good evening.
The first item on the agenda is a communication from the mayor and a draft memorandum of agreement transferring ownership of the Bank Street Armory from the city to the Far River Development Authority.
Your motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the order.
Motion to adopt, uh, motion to, uh, the motion to accept the communication and adopt the order has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none, roll, uh, Counsel Kilby.
Yep, I just want to say quickly, I, um, I think I vented concerns, Counsel. And, uh, however, I think, uh, I, I know how the votes are going to proceed on this. And I, uh, the prospective developer and the RDA, all the luck in the world. Because as I said, it's a, a very, 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 um, significant building in our city, Mr. President. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to, uh, Mr. Sahadi, are you going to make the, uh, I guess, suggested changes that we discussed in finance?
Yes, Counselor, um, Kadeem, I will work with Mr. Coughlin, uh, Attorney Coughlin. He, um, drafted the agreement in the first place. Um, so I will work with him to make, um, in particular, the anticipated or intended to sale, um, change in section 86. And get a new, um, MOU to the mayor and the RDA before it goes before the RDA at their next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
He also had the suggestion to Mrs. Sahadi, uh, for the first right of refusal for the, uh, public purpose. I know Attorney Coughlin, uh, answered his question about that. Uh, but there was the first right of refusal clause if, for whatever reason, there's a change of use. But I don't know.
Uh, I believe Attorney Coughlin indicated that that would be in the land disposition agreement and not in the MOU between, um, the city and the RDA.
That's fine. Just, I just had it in my notes here, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much. Counselor Dion?
Yeah, just one question. So, um, a- assuming this passes and, and the transfer is made, is it pending that those changes are made first or?
Well, if you'd like, if you want to make a, 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 a motion, if, if Counselor Kadeem, who had these concerns, would like to make a motion that we adopt the order with the suggested changes, we can make up, we can do that and make a motion to adopt the order as amended, if you wanted to do that, um, to make it clear so that there's no issues, uh, I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
I think if, uh, he's, if he's amendable to that, I think that, I, that would be a good thing with that I yield.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President?
I, I'll make that motion, Mr. President. So I amend the motion to, uh, uh, to accept the, uh, communication and adopt the order with the amended changes, uh, that were suggested by the, uh, Council and, uh, Finance Committee.
Okay, so there's a, a motion on the, uh, there's a, I see a counselor, there's a motion on the floor to amend, um, the order to it, to suggest that the anticipation for considerations of sale, um, and the additional items that were discussed at the Committee on Finance be included in the MOU in the adoption. Is that correct? Did I say that correctly? Yeah, that's a motion. Decided by Counselor Dion on the amendment to the motion, on the amendment. Any discussion? Counsel Vice President?
Um, Mrs. Sahadi, are you going to include in there that, that they do their due diligence on the other buildings that he owns and the taxes?
I, I can certainly do that. Um, we, we discussed what you discussed, um, adding a paragraph that the RDA do its due diligence. Um, to be sure, taxes are all paid on the other projects that he's currently involved in. And I can certainly add that paragraph as well.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you. I certainly think the event center is the way to go. And I think it's very important that, uh, we know this throughout the city of Far River, all the housing units are going up and everything else. Uh, so be it, but that's not a place that I think we should be putting housing. And I think if it comes to my committee and, uh, anybody can bid on it with the 32B, and then we're going to vent every single one of them, what they want to do with it. But we already know what we'd like to see there, which is important to the area, a nice event center. And that's the way to go. So we send it to RDA, let them vent it out. Uh, let's get everybody together and see if we can make this work. That's a way to go. I think it's good for the city. And I think we're going to do fine with this, with that I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing no further discussion on the amendment, roll call.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalali Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. This is a motion to accept the communication, adopt the order as amended. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalali Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Timothy McCoy to the licensing board.
Motion to approve appointment?
Motion to approve. A quick comment, President?
Your, uh, motion to approve, uh, the appointment has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion, I believe. Discussion, Counselor Kilby?
Yes, just one quick comment. I'm sorry, a little levity here, but, uh, Tim and I went to, uh, we commuted to law school in Boston for four years. Uh, and, and, uh, I drove my Subaru and he was, drove his Toyota. Um, so I don't know if I have a conflict with, but, uh, I'm sorry to throw it out there. Tim's a great guy and I, uh, I appreciate this appointment. So, all right, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier? I see Counselor Dion, you're next.
Is that Timmy McCoy from the school committee?
The real McCoy.
Yeah? Wow, I go for that. I'm going to support him. He's a good guy. I yield.
Counselor Dion?
If my only comment, um, I absolutely support this too. I think he's a great guy and he'll do a great job. Uh, my only comment is on no term limit. Um, the licensing board is one of the committees that it's not applicable to have a, a, um, an expiration date on a term. So I know that, um, my colleague in C8 quite some time ago had put in a thing to look at committees and boards, et cetera. Um, so I don't know, you know, if that's, if that's one of the things that's going to be looked at, that all committees have expiration dates or not. But I just wanted to bring that up, seeing that, you know, the, the sub- but I just wanted to bring that up, seeing that, you know, the, the subject of an appointment came up, but with that, I yield.
Thank you, I need a further discussion on the confirmation, Counselor Pereira.
Yeah, I did want to add what, um, Counselor Dion mentioned about not having a term limit on that, uh, appointment, but I'd also like to take the time to thank Eric Santos, who served on that board for a number of years, did an excellent job, and I wish him well in his new home, um, you know, and I thank him for the service he provided to, to the city. And I don't know if it, you know, sometimes we have people that serve on a board and then they, they resign, they leave from the board, and we've not been in the practice of just sending somebody a thank you letter for all the time, uh, that they'd given in, um, to, to the city, and he did a great job on the licensing board, as I think Tim will, as, uh, Brad stated, they went to high school together, I mean, and to, uh, law school together. Tim does have his Juris Doctorate's degree, so, um, he does have the knowledge to, to review matters of law as well. But I don't know, I, I just would hope that the council would to have the clerk send a letter to Mr. Santos to thank him for the many years of service to the community of Fall River.
I think that would be appropriate. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please make sure you send a letter over to Mr. Santos in a letter of thanks on behalf of the entire council? Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Kadeem.
Uh, thank you, I, I'm, I'm finding it very difficult to, uh, to support Mr. McCoy, because I think when I was on the school committee with him, he may not have seconded one of my motions or something like that, but, but it's in all seriousness, in, in terms of the, um, term limits, is that, is that before, Madam Clerk, is that before the ordinance committee? Is that one of the items that is gonna be addressed?
I think it's, it's included in the, um, resolution or proposed ordinance that suggested that the Corporation Council review all boards and commissions.
Okay, I, I just, I just want to make sure that we get around to making sure that all the boards and committees have expiration dates, uh, or, uh, term limits, or, you know, I, or identified terms, uh, so that we have safety nets in place in case, um, you know, especially when we start talking about liquor licenses and the licensing board, um, we know what the other, prior administration has, uh, done with these type, type of licensing boards, so we want to make sure that we have the ability to, to have a safety net to, to take some measures and, and make sure that we're approving people we feel are, are good fits, um, and kind of be able to reevaluate them. Not to say that they can't serve more than one term, uh, I just want to make sure that we have that safety net, with that, I yield.
Thank you, any further discussion, Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, that was a resolution that I filed early on, I think in January, it took months to get to the ordinance committee, and in April, it was sent to Corporation Council, um, and he has it there, but I, I've got to honestly say that I think, um, you know, with this whole pandemic and that we've had, people have had to shift gears and work with things that are of more importance and getting things done, um, but I would hope that, uh, we would get that back from Attorney Rumsey, because we wouldn't have had the problem we had before, because some boards get paid, others don't get paid. Right, so hopefully, um, we will get that back from him soon, but I, I do realize with COVID, a lot of things have been delayed, with that, I yield, thank you.
If you have any further discussion on the appointment of Mr. McCoy, roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
abstained, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor and the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Resolution for the renovation of the Kathy Asad Todd Lot and Playground.
Uh, Madam Clerk, there is a emo, uh, emergency preamble on here, is this something that would, uh, be, uh, voted on when referred to finance?
Um, no, that would be for this evening, um, the loan order that should ha, have accompanied this packet, um, was presented today. Although you, final action would not be taken this evening, um, should this move forward, Bond Council would require, um, the council to authorize the submission of this, um, loan order this evening.
So I'm planning, I'm, I'm gonna, motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Councilor Kilby, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Pereira, discussion, roll call.
So adoption of this preamble is simply to have this item before you this evening, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Motion to refer to finance, which, we have to do that as well, right?
You would also need to authorize the loan order to be published and refer it to finance, um, and I would suggest, if you're sending it as a package, you would take a vote to refer the, uh, resolution also to finance.
Motion to refer to finance, uh, motion for it to be published? What I, did I say miss?
Motion, motion to refer to finance, um, and to be published.
Motion has been made by Councilor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira, discussion, roll call.
This would be on the loan order to authorize publication and refer to finance, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
And the resolution and communication from the mayor? Would the motion be to refer it to finance as well?
We did that, but motion to refer to finance again, then. But, motion to refer to finance and accept and place on file, is that what it is? Has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pereira, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Interact, uh, we have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira, discussion, roll call.
A referral, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
We have the, um, Board of Election Commissioners filing the official results of the election.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor. For Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On acceptance, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Whereas many concerned residents have questions regarding the proposed soil management project to be conducted by Browning Ferris Industries Incorporated, which was presented to the City Council Committee on Finance on October twenty-seventh, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with representatives from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection to discuss the oversight of this project.
Your motion to adopt? Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pereira, discussion on the resolution, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Lee.
Hello, uh, thank you, so, uh, we did have a lot of conversation about this already during Citizens Input, uh, so just to recap, uh, I was able to, uh, have a conversation for about an hour, uh, conference call with Mass DEP, expressing concerns that came, uh, not just from the individual in, uh, Citizens Input, but some other, um, people as well, about the oversight process and how, um, the, the, their major concerns was about the, the waterway, the waterways in that area and the water, uh, supply.
So, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't think at this point, we have a quorum.
One, two, three, oh, five, we have five.
Two, three, four, five, okay, yes, we do, I'm sorry, all right, we're all set, thank you.
No, it's okay, uh, so, uh, you know, just, just recapping what we talked about earlier, um, and I, and I, while I personally felt, um, perfectly fine with, uh, what Mass DEP gave me, um, I felt it was, uh, it was important to let the public know the situation, uh, so that way, if there are any upcoming concerns, or if there's anyone else out there that has, uh, questions about it, that the information's out there on record publicly, uh, so that's my, that's my resolution, that's the basis of the resolution, and, um, obviously, I appreciate your, uh, sponsorship on it, uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, anything further? Hearing none, is the motion to, uh, Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah, D, DEP is a pretty tough organization, and, uh, I think, uh, they do the right si, thing, and, uh, if they're involved, I'm sure everything is all right, but it's good to check it out once in a while as well, with that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion to adopt, roll call.
Adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Whereas residents of the city of Fall River are facing hardships during the COVID-19 pandemic with increasing needs for public resources, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs convene with representatives from the Mass Support Network to provide information on resources that are available to the residents of Fall River.
Your motion?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Lee.
Once again, uh, was fortunate enough to, uh, be, uh, be contacted by the, uh, representative of the, uh, Mass Support Network here, and, um, they had, they had some, uh, some pertinent information regarding, uh, COVID-19 and, and a wide, uh, variety of services, and I know, um, I already know that how dedicated, um, the chair of that committee is, uh, Counselor Dion, so I actually reached out to, to the counselor over the phone way before I ever put this resolution together, um, to let her know that there were people contacting me, and I would come down the line eventually with something to, uh, to address it, so, um, you know, this is just the network, and hon, and honestly, if anyone feels like this, this needs to be, uh, tabled and amended or anything like that, if they, if they feel like there's other resources out there, I'm open to that as well. But I do think this is a valuable resource that, um, should be, uh, put on, uh, record as well, um, with that, I yield.
Counselor Dion.
Yeah, um, no, I agree, I think this was a great resolution, I think I would like to add, um, that we have a representative perhaps from Bristol Elders and perhaps Tess Curran to also explain the services the Health and Human Services provides, especially during these difficult times, because, you know, they're all groups that, that aid the elderly and different people, and, um, I think it would be a great effort to bring them all together and have a discussion and, and try to, uh, give people out there as much information as we can, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Pereira.
I would just suggest to Counselor Dion, Wendy Gottlieb from, um, United Neighbors, they have meetings every single, um, Tuesday to kind of talk about what services are out there and available, so, um, I think she would be a good, uh, source of knowledge for, things that are available within the community. I, I know that I, I kind of feel bad that one of the shelters, they usually have a fundraiser, and because of COVID, they couldn't, and I'm kind of concerned with that because they need the funding, the finances. You know, and they wanted to do some sort of a bingo that was virtual or what have you, um, but, you know, with the weather getting colder, maybe, you know, in having this meeting and talking about services, we can look at what shelters are available, or, you know, what, um, Rick Agia with the EMS, uh, and he does, it's just gonna be a tough few more months, just suggestions, with that, I yield, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Dion.
No, I agree, uh, we should bring as many to the people to the table as we can, they all have their own expertise, um, absolutely, we can invite Wendy. And, I mean, it, it's true, we're gonna have a lot of people in dire straits, they're gonna have a lot of needs, they're gonna need a lot of services, and I, I think the, um, community, be, you know, being aware of what really is, because I'm sure people aren't aware of everything that's out there, and I think, this group could really bring a lot to light, and we could help a lot of people, so with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
And, uh, just to, just to add to this conversation, there is a website, masstwooneone.org, it's not really specific to just COVID-19 resources, but it is a, uh, it is a good resource page, uh, overall, and not just on COVID, um, but I know that it was mentioned in the Citizens Input for a website for resources, so, um, masstwooneone.org is one of those, uh, websites for that, uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Pelletier.
What was it?
All right, hearing no further discussion, I think Counselor Dion spoke, um, about the invitation to Bristol Elders, Tess Curran, and anybody the chair feels appropriate to invite to this meeting, um, I think it'd probably be appropriate to have that as a motion, as amended.
I would make, I, I'd make that a motion to amend it if the, uh, sponsor is amendable to that.
I, I go further, I second that motion.
Motion has been made by Counselor Dion to amend it with the invitation seconded by Counselor Lee, discussion, hearing none, roll call. On the amendment.
On the amendment. Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Motion to adopt as amended would be appropriate.
So.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Lee, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Whereas in the last few months, there have been two motorcycle accidents on the eastbound exit ramp of the Veterans Memorial Bridge, causing drivers to be ejected off the bridge and into the Taunton River, whereas the safety barrier that was installed on this exit is much too low, now therefore be it resolved that the city council send a letter to the state delegation petitioning Mass DOT Highway Division to improve the safety of this exit by increasing the height of the safety barriers and to install fencing to prevent such accidents from occurring.
Motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Pereira.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is very sad that we had, uh, a fatality there, but two motorcycles have had accidents coming around that curve because that barrier is way too low. Um, I did call, um, Rep Fiola, who is my rep, and that is in her district, and I also heard from Counselor Liberty, who had also reached out, um, to Rep Fiola, as did, uh, Counselor Peckham and, and Counselor Kilby. And the only reason that I want to put this in, I, I've got to tell you, Rep Fiola did get back in touch, she has sent something to Mass DOT, but you know how they have to do a study and come and check it out, and I just think if we send a letter as a council, and the mayor is willing to sell, send a letter as well, then it gives our state delegation a little more, um, show to DOT that this is what we feel in our community is an emergency situation, um, so I, I do thank, you know, all the colleagues who reached out to find out, uh, you know, what we could do to make this safe, it's, um, a tragic loss of a young life, and we were lucky that the first person, you know, managed to survive, but that wall is only three feet high on that curve, they need to put a fence or something, and it needs to be done fast. With the bad weather coming and, and snow or ice, it's even gonna be worse, so, you know, oftentimes we wait, something happens, and then after it happens a few times, then we do something, and I think as a council, we're trying to, um, jump the gun and get on it. And I think as a council, we're trying to jump the gun and get on it sooner. And I just think that that may help our state delegation. It'd be nice for the for the state to see all of us working together. So maybe if we could do that, I'd appreciate it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Council vice president?
Yep. So just to echo what Linda said, several of us had reached out to Rep Fiola. And on Monday, right after that accident, she did send diagrams in her request for review to Mass Highway and Mass D O T. But I think this letter would go nicely along with it. But she did start that that Monday. Councillor Pereira.
Thank you, councillor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to prolong it, but the resolution speaks for itself. If anyone's been around that bridge, I remember when it was first built, we, if you traverse around the that curve, it's definitely a death trap. You know, speed kills, of course. I mean, there are people that that try travel at high speeds. But there's definitely has to be some barrier that's put up there or some type of deterrent to to prevent a tragedy like this. I, from what I recall, what I read, they didn't recover the body for a day or two. So such crazy trauma. Maybe it could have been avoided with proper precautions on the bridge. But I think the resolution is right on point. And I I'm very grateful for Linda to have reached out to Carol Fiola, which is her jurisdiction, right? And and what she's been really hands on. So I I appreciate this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pelletier.
Yeah, well, I travel there a lot. Let me tell you, I take that curve and I say, wow, that that wall is not too tall. And sure enough, they're going over, they're flipping over. And thanks, thank God, we we get the fire department in the boat. But a loss of life already is crazy. I don't know what the engineers were thinking. It's a bad curve. And something has to be done. And I'm sure something will be done thanks to Linda and our delegation and all of us council, including the mayor of City Fall River, that's going to push to make sure that it gets done. And I classify this as an emergency. Winter's coming, ice and snow. I mean, they 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 may bang the barriers. Not all of them are going to go over. But it it can certainly create people getting hurt. So I I think we send a good message, and we got to make sure that they do something up there. And I'm I'm sure they will. Thank you.
Councillor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's kind of strange, because if you actually drive it and you go around the curve, there is fencing, but it's not until you get to the very bottom of that exit ramp or on ramp to 79 and Deval Street, which, you know, at that point, the drop's probably, you know, 50 feet. Where at the height of the drop off, there's there's no fencing whatsoever. So I I'd like to just make an amendment to the to the to the motion to include that we send a letter directly to District Five. Typically, the city would send a request letter to District Five, and and I would just amend it to include not only to the state delegation, but that a a letter go directly to District Five, having the city council request immediate action to be taking place with regard to the safety, the public safety issue of the bridge.
Motion has been made by councillor Kadim on the amendment to send a letter to Sector Five, has been made by councillor Kadim, seconded by councillor Kilby. On the amendment only. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Amendment, councillors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Next councillor Kadim, do you yield?
I yield.
Thank you. Councillor Dion.
I'm set. Thank you.
You're good. Councillor Lee.
Yes, I I felt it was it's also important to see that the administration send a letter as well. I think what councillor councillor Pereira mentioned was was just really important to see that unification there of all of all of us trying to do what we can to to rectify this situation. And and also, I I agree, it's it's this is an emergency. This is something that needs to happen. And it wouldn't hurt to just to kind of look over every other, you know, area that that Mass Doc can look at to to make sure that we don't have anything like this happen again. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. I just want to quickly say, I I appreciate this resolution very much. I know many of us have been called by the press and and Providence and a couple of other people. But I I just got to say, you know, I I don't know what gets into bridge development at the state level. But shame on them, or whoever was responsible for the engineering aspects of preparing something like this. I mean, I recall vividly when that bridge went up, councillor Mitchell, I wasn't on the council then, couldn't believe that they didn't have any indication of Fall River on that bridge. It was within days that councillor Mitchell had at the city council, I wasn't on, I was just watching on TV because I've been a nerd my whole life. And I've and and.
I'll say that.
And I and and within days after councillor Mitchell and Pereira's work, they had a sign up that said Fall River, entering Fall River. So, you know, whoever was responsible for the design work in the approval process of such bridge with such low benchmarks or barriers, shame on them and shame on whoever was responsible for that. And and I know our our state reps, as well as Carol Fiola, probably already working on legislation to make sure that there's policies in place for stuff like that to happen. And I'm sure that we could all contribute to that. But shame on whoever was responsible for the development of that. And they shouldn't have to play politics with this either. They should just go get it done. So maybe if you want to, maybe, you know, we can make that crystal clear in our letter. But I I think we got to get it done, and the state needs to get it done.
Took them 20 years to build a bridge.
Took them 20 years to build the bridge, right. They couldn't put put barriers up. Mind boggling. Motion to adopt as amended has been made by councillor Kadim, seconded by councillor Kilby. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councillors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a severe loss of revenue to many restaurants and other establishments requiring liquor licenses. And whereas fees for these licenses are substantial, and many small businesses are suffering financially due to required closures, reduced capacity, and the current seasonal changes that will discourage outdoor dining. And whereas free cash was certified for the city of Fall River at approximately $5 million, now therefore be it resolved that the administration submit a proposal to the council for 25% reduction in the cost of the renewal fees for restaurant, all alcohol licenses, restaurant beer and wine licenses, package store, all alcohol licenses, package store beer and wine licenses, and associated common victualer and entertainment licenses. And be it further resolved that the loss of revenue be supplemented with a one-time use of free cash.
Before we entertain any type of motion on this, I'm going to be abstaining from the vote, spoke to the State Ethics Commission just to play it safe. And I'm going to be abstaining from the vote. Council vice president?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt?
Adopt made by councillor Dion, seconded by councillor Pelletier. Any discussion? Councillor Pereira?
Yeah, I I have some question. I know that the mayor was working on giving a reduction of the 25%. And I know he was looking at restaurants that have all liquor licenses, which there are 68 of those at 238,000 in licenses. Restaurants with beer and wine at 2,000, there's 13 of those at 26. Private clubs, there's 17, and that's 45.9. Seasonal liquor, there's there's three, that's 2,000 a piece at 6,000. Vets, there's two locations. All total, farmers brew package stores and liquor license, that comes out to 379.5 in total. Mrs. Sahadi is on. I know that the the mayor and councillor Pelletier and I were in a briefing, and we talked about restaurants with all liquor, restaurants with beer and wine, some of the private clubs. 25% of that, that would be a total of 59.5, almost 60,000. You know, so that would be, you know, the 25% would be the 59. I said we should include the vets in that. I just think that package stores have done really well. You know, the the package stores, people go to the package stores and they're going home. And I just, you know, am concerned, are we going to have other, the common victualer's license? He didn't, the mayor didn't have that on the sheet that I asked for. But, you know, are other places going to want to do that, too? I get it that we want to be able to help some of these businesses because they are struggling. But I just wonder where the balance is, so that some people aren't feeling, oh, they're doing for this group, but we're not doing for this group. You have, you know, a lot of the hair salons, they have to pay for different licenses as well. Even, you know, personal property tax or licenses, a lot of them were out for quite a while and lost a lot of money. You know, do we give, who else do we give to? So I just want to, let's talk about that and see. I think I'd like to see something done. But I think that maybe it's too too wide of a spread, and we're still not encompassing everybody that pays a license. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Pelletier, one of the sponsors of the resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate being on the resolution. I started working on this, and I got a little discouraged because someone from the administration felt that we're going to lose a lot of money. But when I I listened to some of my friends at like the IPC club, most place with their clothes, unless they serve food, perry pedogi, all to go. And 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 they're going to pay the liquor license, and it's a lot of money. I called the Bevitt up, and I said, listen, what are you guys doing? It's going to, we're going to lose so much money. So I said, well, maybe I should let it go. And two, two of my colleagues picked up on it, and all of a sudden, they want to do it, which is all right. And I I think it's all right. It's a thing to do. Give them a break. It's tough running a business, but if you don't serve food, you can't open the door. And that's what they do. Even the else love, I don't think they've got a kitchen in there, and you just can't serve liquor. So to say that we can give them a break, it's $60,000 as Linda said. And I think they deserve it. And some of these places probably don't have the money or money's tight. I mean, even not doing no businesses, I mean, it's not only that, too, because you have the entertainment, there's a lottery ticket, they're closed, losing all this money. To say that we can help these guys, it's the right thing to do. I do support it. As well. I yield.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Councillor Lee, another sponsor of the resolution.
Yep. So there, so as 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 mentioned, there's three sponsors on this, councillor Kadim, councillor Pelletier, myself. I believe we all sort of came from different angles on this a little bit. I know my my response, and a part of the reason why I wrote this, is because directly related to the governor's curfew, which directly, in my opinion, affected restaurants and bars. And and I was, and I and and obviously, the resolution that I had a couple of weeks ago didn't go through. But I feel like this was this was more specifically designed to help who was specifically affected by this curfew. So that's that's where I came from, to try to give some relief to to that specific thing. Councillor Pereira mentioned, you know, what about hair salons and things like that? I think that if there is, you know, if there is an actual business that is directly affected by some of the proposals that were made by the governor and the curfew and things like that, then, I mean, I'm I'm very open to any other resolutions out there to help businesses. I think in this situation, the curfew directly affected restaurants and bars. And I feel like that's the part of the reason why I put this together. That's that's another one reason why I put this together. So I would, you know, I obviously support this as well. And I'm willing to, I believe it was councillor Kadim, he can speak for himself, but I believe it was he that mentioned or added the the liquor stores to this. And, you know, I'm I'm willing, obviously, to go with that, to to make sure that the part that I want to see go through as well. So that I yield.
Can I just get a clarification? Is it just it's just a one-time thing?
This would be, for me, that's that's how I designed it. It's in it's in response to the curfew. It's in response to restaurants being, you know, and bars being sort of, you know, affected by this. So I I wouldn't want this to be a long, a long-lasting thing. I think this is something that's, you know, to to help relieve the problem right now.
Thank you. Madam clerk, is everybody's license renewed at the same time, or are they throughout the year?
There's an annual renewal. The process.
At one time?
They go through the process right now.
Okay, so it would be, everybody would be this, just this one time. Thank you. Councillor Kadim?
Thank you. Just councillor Lee kind of spoke a little bit to the process of how this resolution came together. You know, I had requested Colleen draft a resolution for me. She had mentioned that councillor Pelletier was was in the works for some time, trying to put this together, and that councillor Lee was also looking to do something. So she was able to kind of take everybody's different approach and and kind of meld it together and and put this here. My my reasoning behind the 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 package stores is because that would be the only other entities that were outside of the liquor licenses that weren't getting a break. And I think if you start looking at a lot of these package stores, you know, we probably have three large corporations that that sell alcohol, one in the South Coast, you've got one in the North End, and one in the South End. And you start looking at the number of package store licenses that we have outstanding, all of those are small mom and pop stores, right? There are a lot of individuals who are either there all day, working themselves, or if they do have staff, limited on staff. And the staff that they had probably chose maybe to not work, because, as we all know, people were making more money with unemployment than they were working. So it it creates a some struggles there. Not to mention, you know, these small businesses, we always talk about what are we doing with small businesses? You know, there there are other costs associated with, you know, these businesses that we we don't really take into account. If if you've got a a business owner who's really the primary employee of of that of that store, you know, and they get sick, they're out, right? There's nobody paying, or they're not, they're not able to keep the the stores open. So I I think it only makes sense from my standpoint to include not just the pack, the restaurants. Because at at the end of the day, there there, we we can make the same argument. There there are restaurants that made a ton of money during this pandemic, you know, with takeout food and and great advertisement and having, you know, loyal customers constantly going there, while others are closed and will never open up again, right? So I I think we need to be consistent with what we're doing. If we're going to provide it for one, I think we need to provide it for for all of them. And I think the 25% reduction makes sense. You know, a a lot of our free cash was generated because, you know, obviously municipal government was closed for that that last quarter of of the year. And we were able to generate and have some additional savings there. So I think it only makes sense to give it back one time. This truly is, should be a a one-time supplement. And and the use of free cash, to me, makes sense. And I I think it's it's a good way to say that we support our our local businesses. And and I know there are other businesses that, you know, we probably should be helping as well, that we're not going to be able to help. But I think this is really just, you know, a a good gesture for the for the city council and the administration to come down and try to provide some type of relief to these businesses. And and I think I think when you look at the licenses, I mean, the liquor licenses tend to be the most expensive licenses to be renewed, you know. So every small, small business owner, you know, tends to struggle sometimes when these licenses come up on a on an annual basis. So I think it's just a good gesture. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dion?
I think what makes it difficult is anytime you're drawing a line or extending a line, there's somebody on one side or the other that's going to feel slighted or feel hurt. But it is true. I mean, I I don't know exactly anymore. I know at one time, I know at one time, the liquor licenses were, I think, I believe, $2,000 a year, and they're probably higher than that now. So so it is, you know, an expensive, an expensive license. But a lot of these places. But a lot of these places did lose twenty-five percent of the year. They were shut down for that, for, for twenty-five percent of the year. And it actually translated probably more into fifty to sixty percent loss in business. So um, you know, though it's difficult to draw the line, I, I, I think too that we should help as many as we can. And I uh, fully support that, this um, resolution. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on this? Council, uh, Kilby?
Thank you. Don't you forgot my name?
Huh?
I totally forgot my name. Uh, I'm sorry. You know, usually uh, the average liquor license, I'm sorry Pam, is about four thousand bucks uh, a year. Um, so we're talking about fifteen percent reduction. I, I understand the arguments in terms of uh, and I appreciate uh, Council Lee's resolution. Um, but what are the ramifications on the budget? I mean, I, that, I got, we all have to think about that. We debated the budget for uh, weeks on end and it got a little um, uh, maybe a little too aggressive. Um, so yeah, it, you know, I represent some places and it's about four thousand dollars per year. And um, and the liquor stores, like uh, Council Pereira said, are, are making out like bandits now. Because no one really is going to bars and restaurants. So I'll support the resolution, there's no doubt about it. But um, I'm just concerned about the budget going forward to uh, to our next fiscal year and, and to see what the ramifications of this fifteen percent um, off the four thousand multiplied by maybe three, four hundred, I guess. So I yield, thank you.
Thank you, um.
Did I make sense? I'm just given my concern, that's all.
Thank you, Councilor. I know you wanna speak again, Council Pereira, but I, I just wanted to say that I do agree with you and as far as um, drawing a line, I, I would um, support this, but I, I'm, would be more than willing to work with you, Councilor, on um, the salons and things like that. If we can get some information from the administration to see if we're able to help any of those businesses as well.
Well, I can, I, I still have the floor. I think salon should be off the record, just um, not even be.
I got it. A few minute and then I look at this for me.
Liquor stores, uh, no. If you wanna talk about salons, no. But if you wanna talk about uh, you know, bars and taverns and restaurants, yes. I yield.
Thank you, Council Pereira.
I, I would just like to hear from um, from Mrs. Sahadi. I would be willing to do restaurants, all liquor, which is sixty-eight, beer and wine, private clubs, as Council Pelletier talked about, some of the clubs like the Republican Club, um, you know, uh, what club did you mention? Did you mention the one on Slade? The Italian Progresso Club? You know, these are small clubs that are hurting, Corky Row Club, you know, um.
Point of, point of information, just, just a point of information. So the, so the resolution is just requesting that the administration come back with a proposal to the city council at twenty-four.
Yes.
It's, it's not, the vote tonight won't uh, handcuff us or commit us to anything other than seeing a proposal so we can get all that information from the administration to, to be able to make an educated decision on this, that's all.
Right, I understand that and it is twenty-five percent that we're asking for. But you know, I would go with the seasonal and also, there's only two veterans' locations on Danforth Street and Bedford Street. And we are known to take care of our vets and they've had a loss there. I, I wouldn't look at the, the package stores, I mean, it's up to the administration. I think it's a good resolution if we can try to help.
Look up the resolution.
Did I yield?
No, you didn't.
I didn't.
I'm sorry.
We, we actually already have a motion to adopt on the floor, Council Kilby.
I mean, that's the only thing, and I'd like to hear from Mrs. Sahadi. If the total of all the licenses we have are three hundred, um, three hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred, the twenty-five percent of that, would we take that from free cash or would you be able to find this in the budget? I would have the administration look at that as well.
Thank you.
And it's only this year. And the other thing is, in conversations with the mayor, I think Council Pelletier brought it up. What if some of these places already paid? Cause they have to pay by December thirtieth. And the mayor indicated to Council Pelletier, or Mrs. Sahadi, um, indicated that it would be refunded to them. They would get a reimbursement on it. So if Mrs. Sahadi could um, shed some light on what that total cost would be and, you know.
Point of order, I think.
To the administration concerns that some.
You have a point of order, Council Kilby?
Yes, I think, I think it's putting uh, Miss Sahadi on the spot a little bit. I think we should uh, as Council Kadim said, it's, it's a resolution and it's asking for a proposal uh, to the administration, so we should vote on it. I, I, I don't think it's appropriate to send Miss Sahadi down and ask her for numbers, so.
Well, correct. But I would like to be able to share that the mayor's been working on this already with, before this resolution came. I'd like to see what some of those opinions were as well. Cause if it's something that, huh, I'd like to give him my opinion and say.
Okay.
It should be this or that.
My suggestion.
Sahadi on the spot, totally up to her. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Mrs. Sahadi, are you prepared to answer any of those questions? This does ask for you to submit a proposal, so you'll be before us with the information to back up the proposal.
So we, we will come back to you with a proposal. Um, certainly, um, this particular discussion this evening is to um, utilize free cash. So the um, appropriation order would be for this council to, if we came back with a proposal for the entire amount, um, twenty-five percent of four hundred thousand, give or take, is a hundred thousand dollars. So you'd be utilizing a hundred thousand dollars of your free cash. But um, to Council Pereira's point, we have been working um, on this project. We have been looking at those people who have paid licenses, um, and those that have not at this particular point. And we've actually been working with CDA at the same time with um, the possibility that um, businesses would have to apply for this refund and meet certain criteria. Because you are correct, there are a number of businesses that um, have done very well during this pandemic. And there are other businesses that have closed and may not reopen. And so we wanna be fair to everyone. Um, so at this particular point, um, I don't think we have a proposal ready to come down to you. But with regard to what or how the process would he- would work, um, if somebody had paid their renewal, cause as um, the city clerk Allison indicated earlier this evening, they're, they do, they're due now. So if they had paid their amount, we would refund it, um, similar to when somebody overpaid another type. Um, we would utilize them or we'd set them up as a vendor and we would send them a refund check.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. I'm Council Dion.
Yeah, I just have a question. Where um, some of the people who would be getting refunds, um, obviously, it was a, their problems, they're shutting down, they're not being able to operate, people going out of business was the direct result of COVID. Could COVID monies be used to offset people in that situation because they are COVID-related expenses?
Um, unfortunately not, because it really wouldn't be a COVID-related expense. You are actually reducing the fee and so it would be lost revenue. And lost revenue is one of the areas that Congress has not allowed as an allowable expense at this particular point.
Maybe we can look at the, uh, maybe we can look at the uh, event line item. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Would you have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the resolution, please.
We, we already have a motion to adopt made by Council Dion, seconded by Council Pelletier, Madam Clerk.
Adoption, Council Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Bella Bilibow?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponte? Who has abstained. Motion carries.
If I make a motion?
Item is the order granting. I'm sorry?
May I make a motion to take curb removals, items ten to fourteen?
Second.
Motion to take uh, items ten through fourteen, the curb removals has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Dion, discussion. Council Pelletier.
You know, I look at this and you're talking uh, thirty, twenty feet, twenty-nine feet, forty-seven feet, and it's always the same as you. The proposed work and, and prove access to the property does not cause a certain uh, uh, thing to the neighborhood, all in the good. It's always the same thing, same thing, same thing. Some people will get access on one street and they're gonna access on the other street. And uh, I, I just think we're, they're going wacky, just give them out, give them out. Uh, so I'm, I, I just don't wanna deal with this. I think it's wrong. They gotta have a better reason than they wanna, one entrance on one street and the other entrance on the other street. So it's like uh, I, I just don't think it's right, there's something wrong here. So I'm not gonna support it.
You yield, Counselor?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Council Pereira.
Well, um, Council Pelletier and I were talking about this, that some of these curb cuts are rather large. One of these curb cuts has already been cut. Um, I did speak to Mrs. Ferreira because they go through the traffic department, but the traffic department does nothing with them but send them over to engineering. So I did talk to um, Dennis Sylvia today and Dennis said, when he gets them from traffic, he goes out, measures, and he takes photographs and then sends um, a description to the council. But the problem is that um, if traffic doesn't have a meeting, things get delayed there by the time uh, he gets them. And another issue, and I, I don't know what the rationale is for this to go to traffic, because traffic does nothing with it, but send it to engineering. When it gets to engineering, they notify, they give a list of abuddhas to the city council and our clerks are the ones sending out the letters to all the abuddhas. Um, one of the issues is that on many of these new developments, people know, the developer knows that they can do a sixteen-foot driveway with no need uh, to come for, to the council. But then after the development is done, I guess homeowners don't know, they widen things and he has been catching people who have extended or cut curbs or extended the driveways. Even though there's no curb in some of this development, if you recall, way back, um, Council Haig had put in a resolution, whether or not there's a curb, if you're making your driveway opening more than sixteen feet, it needs to um, come in before us for a hearing. So I just think that that needs to be tweaked a little bit so that we're getting more information on it. I mean, you know, some of them um, with new developments coming, they're widening it to get more cars off the street. But then there's areas that there are a lot of automobiles and we're taking away parking spaces. I just think that needs to be tweaked. These I'll, I'll support because they've already been in. I will support them, but I think uh, we need to look at sending this to the ordinance committee and changing how the ordinance reads for where street openings go. I think it going to traffic is a waste of time and maybe we can have Mrs. Ferreira and uh, somebody from the engineering come in and explain what works for them. It, it's just one more thing in the process that it's needless. We're trying to um, lessen the amount of um, that it takes for government to move, not to increase it. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, I just want the councilors to be aware that the process by which this comes to us, there's a, there's a couple of different areas it goes to first. So af- once you get a curb cut application, it goes to engineering. Engineering that sends it to traffic and then it comes to the city council. So, so I just want everybody to know, it's not like it comes to the city council, it goes to engineering and then traffic. There's, there's different departments and boards that comes through before it comes to us. So the due diligence phase usually should be happening uh, with engineering, when they get the curb cut, then the traffic board and then to us last. So just, I didn't want there to be any confusion on that. Any further discussion on this, Councilor Dion?
So maybe moving forward, if this does go to ordinance, um, maybe when it goes to engineering and then goes to traffic, both departments should put a recommendation with each curb cut so that we have something to base it on, as opposed to they just send it to us. Is it, you know, is engineering sending it to us with a recommendation to do it?
Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
If I, if I, if I can enter, I, I don't mean to cut you off, Counselor, but Madam Clerk, can you explain a little bit? I mean, I know it goes to engineering. Engineering probably has to send a recommendation to the traffic board, can you do?
The application begins with the engineering department. The engineer does review the request. He, he or she does send their recommendation and whether or not they feel that it should move forward. The ordinance was amended to include the traffic department. So the, from the engineering division, it goes to the traffic commission. Their role is to, I guess, survey the property or at least review the request and determine whether or not parking would be, will be affected. Whether or not they do that, I don't know. And then it comes to the council at that point because a public hearing is required by the council for the curb cut. So that is why we are the, we are responsible to notify the abuddhas. It's based upon the re- the requirement for the public hearing.
Council Dion, you still have the floor.
Cause um, you know, I can, I, most of the time I, I try to see all of these to, to, but my opinion is only my opinion. I'm not an engineer. Um, there might be, you know, reasons why an engineer would look at, the engineering department would look at something and say, no, I don't think this is a good thing. And in my world, I'm thinking I'm not, it, it wouldn't interfere with anything. So that's why I was wondering if there was a, a, a definite um, you know, recommendation process just to, just to give more information to it. Um, cause I've seen some that I thought were great, I've seen some that I thought shouldn't be. So with that, I yield.
If, if I, if I may, I mean, we could talk about this for a while. I know Council Kadim wants to speak to it, but um, if it's the, if it's the councils want to file a resolution to so, to send it to the ordinance committee to make changes to it, I think we could do that. Right now, what's before us is the adoption of the curb cut removals. Um, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think the, the, the purpose, uh, it would be a good idea to file a resolution, have that discussion, refer to ordinance and do it that way. We're in full council right now and any changes that you have or you suggest, I think should be done through ordinance and a resolution. None of that's gonna be done tonight, but all your concerns, all your concerns, all your concerns are very well understood. And if you, if it's the will of the council and you individually as councilors to file a resolution, then I certainly encourage that. Council Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and, and I recognize that. However, I, I, you know, I've got the same concerns that Council Pelletier and, and Council Pereira have. Like, you, you take um, you know, just item number thirteen, so you've got Thomas Street. You know, if you go down that street, that's ninety percent of that is three families and six families. Uh, that's where the Immaculate Conception uh, church used to be. I know there's some, some, maybe the curb opening is for one of the new roads, uh, new houses. But if you drive down that street, you can't find any parking, right? Uh, I mean, it's, it's almost nearly impossible. And I, and I think, you know, part of the concern, especially with Council Dion, is, is to make sure that when we're approving these items, that yes, maybe when engineering goes and takes a look at it, they say that it's feasible, um, traffic looks at it. But I think we need to do our due diligence phase two to make sure that we know how many cars are, are gonna be taken off the road um, in way that the benefits with the curb openings. Because at the end of the day, you know, when we have, when we get to the winter and then we have snowstorms and, and we've got parking bans and these people have nowhere to park, we're the ones that are hearing that there's no parking available for, for folks. Now, I know Thomas Street, you, you've got the Flint parking lot, but that's almost uh, you know, two or three blocks away, uh, if not further. You know, Stafford Road probably makes sense, cause there's not a whole lot of parking on Stafford Road. But these are the types of things I think we need to kind of keep in, into consideration when we're looking to do this, that when, when we have property owners coming in, the widening of, of the driveway, the curb cut should, should be to benefit and take cars off the streets. And, and hopefully, if you're taking two or three cars off the streets, you're, you're generating parking, additional parking for other individuals who don't have off-street parking. Uh, so those are the, those are the curb cuts that I would support moving forward. But we've gotta figure out a mechanism to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to, to ensure that that's what's really taking place here. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Council Pereira.
You know, I've watched traffic meetings and I know people on the traffic commission, I asked, did you ever vote on this? They never vote on these. So if Mrs. Ferreira's going out and then Mr. Sylvia's going out to view the same thing, it doesn't make sense. Um, if you wanna make a motion for these and then, is it appropriate to make a motion right after to get a resolution?
I think it'd be, I think, I think it'd be cleanest to s- to write the resolution.
And send it in.
And send it in, yes. And send it in, yes.
I yield. Thank you.
Any further?
If I may add, we do have documentation from the traffic commission that says at a meeting of the board, the commission held on this particular one for Seaview, at a meeting held on November fourth, a curb, a request for curb cut was heard and approved. So that's what they're letting the council know. So we're of the impression that they have met on it and done their due diligence.
I agree. The motion to adopt has been made to adopt the curb removals ten through fourteen, which is Alisa Barbosa, Maria Di Amaral, Luis de Frit, De Freides, Rosa Di Rodrix, and Antonio Mello has been made and seconded hearing. No further discussion on the adoption. Madam clerk, roll call.
Uh, this, this is to take the items together?
I'm sorry, to take the items ten through fourteen together. I apologize.
No problem.
Motion to a, adopt, taking items ten through fourteen together has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to adopt would be appropriate, all items?
So.
Motion to adopt ten through fourteen, which is Alicia Amaral, Maria Di, uh, I'm sorry, Alicia Barbosa, Maria Di Amaral, Louis De Frits, uh, Rosa Rodrix, and Antonio Mello has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none on the adoption. Madam clerk, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item fifteen is the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt their report?
Motion to adopt the police chief's report has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pereira, discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
Adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number sixteen are applications for the renewal of auto repair shops at seven forty-five Breton Avenue and twenty-one forty-seven Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt would be appropriate. Motion to adopt has been made by, I believe, by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item seventeen is the application for the transfer of an auto repair shop license located at twenty-five fifty-three South Main Street.
Your motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number eighteen are claims.
Motion for a cooperation council has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by?
Me.
Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to take items nineteen through twenty-one together?
Motion.
Motion to take items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, which is uh City Council Committee on Finance meeting October thirteenth, October twenty-seventh, and the regular council meeting on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, to take those items together has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Dion. Uh, roll call.
On taking the items together, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to approve, uh, minutes would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. Roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-two is an open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins regarding a violation on November seventeenth.
Cooperation Council referral.
Motion for a cooperation council has been made by Counselor Kilby, who are second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. I just want to um take a moment to comment on, on this for a second. Um, I, I want the, the council and the community to know that when we get open meeting law violations, when we're in Zoom, um, we are all trying really, really hard uh to make these meetings as transparent as possible. And the clerks, the city clerk, our staff in the clerk's office is working tremendously hard day in and day out to adjust to these new changes. And I know that we get a city council uh violation of an open meeting uh pretty much every meeting. But I, I want to make it clear, as council president, we are not doing anything to try to have open meeting law complaints at every single meeting. I think every meeting, we get an open meeting law violation, and I'm sure we're gonna get one here tonight, right? But I, I just want, I just want you to know, the clerks, I want the community to know, and these people who continuously file these open meeting law violations, which you can continue to do so, they're gonna continue to be referred to Corporation Council. I, I'm almost at a point where I want to pen a letter to the governor if we need to make changes to the open meeting law process and our state reps to, to make changes, because we're trying really hard. We continue to try hard on this. We're getting letters now from the open meeting law department that are now telling us that we need to have counselors' names on, under the screen. We get the counselors' names on the screen. That's not good enough. I mean, we're trying, folks. And, and the clerk's office and Corporation Council on a religious basis is working to make, to, to, to make changes to this and to make these, these meetings as transparent as possible. So I, I just want to make it, make it clear that we're trying and, and, and it, it's starting to become cumbersome, but I get it. We'll continue to get them. I'm sure we'll get three more. It's fine, right? I'm just telling you, enough is enough. We're really trying our best. I, as council president, and I know the chairs aren't going out of their way to, to make sure that we violate the open meeting law. I think the open meeting law people need to have a class on Zoom for the next, you know, two months to make sure that we have crystal clear rules on what we can and can't do, instead of continuously getting these violations and having Corporation Council write letters and letters and letters, taking positions. It's just, it's starting to annoy me, so I figured I'd make that comment. Counsel?
On that point, can I please comment?
Second, Council Vice President.
Cliff, I just want to point out that you said violations there. They, these aren't act, we don't know that these are violations. They're, they're sending in complaints. It would be interesting, and could we just ask Corporation Council? Just because somebody complains, they can file one of, one of these, whatever, whenever they want, but it doesn't mean it's accurate. So I know we hear this at every single meeting, that there's a open meeting law complaint, um, but, I mean, there's probably hundreds of them, but how many of them actually are valid?
Yeah, and I, I stand corrected, Council Vice President. I, I'm not saying there's violations. I'm just saying, I, I should have said complaints. We get them every week for every new reason under the sun. Maybe the state should send us a long letter about what we can and can't do, and we'll try our best to do it. But the continued complaints about violations that the city council and the city council president have on November seventeenth. I mean, we're not maliciously trying to violate the open meeting law, right? I mean, we're trying here. I mean, we were gonna have a meeting, we didn't have a meeting, we were gonna have it live, we couldn't have it live. I mean, come on, guys, give us a break.
I yield.
Counselor Kilby?
Yeah, I was just in support of what you're saying. Um, I agree. Um, a lot of these charges are frivolous. And however, it, it, there's, uh, it's a, it's a public's right to file them, right? So, um, and I don't think there's a, you know, as an attorney, if I file a frivolous lawsuit, you know, I could be sanctioned and penalized for. Um, so it is frustrating, and it does take a lot of time uh out of uh Corporation Council and, and others who have to defend these things. Um, it is what it is, but I'm totally agreement with it. I don't want this meeting to be prolonged more than it is. I'm looking at the clock. But um I'm in agreement. I mean, I, I hope and wish that if you have a legitimate complaint, then put it forward, but if, I mean, you make a hobby over uh just putting fault these complaints, then, you know, I, I don't know. You know, I respect everyone's opinion, but um it, it, it tends to occupy a lot of civic time when we're trying our best to, to conduct ourselves in the right, in the right fashion. So that's it. I spoke too much. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I, I, my comments aren't directed at any individual person. I'm just saying that we're really trying, as council president, I'm on the phone with the clerks every other day about what it is that we're gonna do to make adjustments. As chair and chairwoman, you guys are all doing the same thing, and other departments are doing the same thing too. We're, we're not trying to do anything to get a open meeting law complaint, but we just get one every week for every new reason under the sun.
We're gonna get another one uh as a result of this conversation.
I sure, I sure bet we will. Motion for a cooperation council has been made and seconded hearing. No further discussion. Roll call on the referral.
Referral, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-three is the um response from the Assistant Corporation Council um of an alleged violation on October twenty-seventh.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Motion submitted.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby. Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, roll call.
On accepting um the communication placing it on file, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
And twenty-four is the Assistant Corporation Council's uh response to an open meeting law complaint, um also of October twenty-seventh.
Motion for.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion submitted.
Place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier. Roll call.
Uh, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-five is a communication from PERAC and the FY twenty-twenty-two appropriation.
Motion to accept and place on file?
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kadim. Seconded by Counselor Dion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November thirtieth voted five yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, roll call.
On passage through first reading, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November thirtieth voted five yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading passed to be enrolled and passed to be ordained.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dion. Roll call on the emergency preamble.
Adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
And on the handicap parking ordinance for passage through all readings?
Motion.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by? Counselor Dion. Discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November thirtieth voted five yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as in a stop intersection on Bark Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to uh pass the first reading has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, roll call.
On passage through first reading, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes, thank you, guys.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November thirtieth voted four yeas, one nay, to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be granted leave to withdraw, with Counselor Lee voting in the negative, as a thirty-minute parking on Robeson Street.
Motion to adopt uh.
Motion to give the item leave. Yep. Motion to give the item leave to withdraw has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kadim. Roll call.
I'm granting the item leave to withdraw, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November thirtieth voted five yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. These are fees for the traffic um, traffic commission, for traffic violations.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended has been made by Counselor Kadim. Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
Passage through first reading, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November 30th voted five yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. These, this is the establishment of a fee schedule for utility poles.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kadim. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, Counsel Vice President?
So as far as the utilities polls go, Counselor Dion called me last night after the meeting. I believe she called Mrs. Hadi as well, about a concern she had on one of these, that it wasn't specific. And she's correct. So I met with the clerks today, and then also Attorney Ramsey. And Madam Clerk, I saw your email back to Counselor Dion. However, I still don't think that we had the exact, well, I know we don't have the exact wording, and we can amend it on the floor, but I don't think that we have been given yet the intent of what those were supposed to say. Corporation Council said that Attorney Hawiak had worked on this, so he wasn't sure what the intent was on the first one and the last one with the fee. And so I don't know if we need to send this back to ordinance, if we can table it here or what we need to do.
I spoke to Corporation Council this afternoon as well. The first item, which was the $1,000 fee, is for a new or replacement pole. So if, if there is a, an existing pole that a utility company wants to attach one of those small wireless facilities to, that is already at full capacity, the company that owns the pole, whether it's Verizon or whichever company, they would then require a new pole or replacement pole at that same location. That's when the $1,000 would be charged.
It's just for the pole. It doesn't matter. Say they wanted to put three wireless facilities on the pole. It's just the pole authorization.
It's, it's the pole itself when there's a new or replacement pole.
Okay, so that one makes sense. The second one makes sense. I'm sorry.
The last one that was the fine is for failure to notify the city when they abandon those facilities.
Right.
It would be for each facility that's abandoned.
Okay, so I think it needs to say that. Because what if they have three on a pole? Are they being fined for three? Or they?
Yes, fine for a company's failure to notify the city within 90 days that the facility was abandoned. So that's each facility.
Okay, and that's just a one-time?
Yes.
Not per day, it's not anything like that? Okay.
It does, it, it, on its face, it's a one-time fine.
All right, so the first one is just for a new pole. The second one is?
Test. The actual structure.
Okay, so if it's one through five, it's 500, no matter what it is. The second one is additional small wireless facility over five. And that was the other question that, I'm sorry, I think that's what brought it up in the first place. Is it for any amount over five, or is it each? And I believe they said it would, Attorney Ramsey said it was each?
Each, or, or each one individual above five.
So he said we could add the word each before additional.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I will yield to Counselor Dion for now. Thank you.
Counselor Dion?
Yes, basically, it was just about clarification. And I did get an email from Attorney Ramsey today. And basically, number two and number three, one follows the other. So they would go to be in the same paragraph, so it would be four instead of five. So it basically, so it reads pole authorization for small wireless facilities up to five, and then additional small wireless facilities over five. So it was just a clarity issue. So yes, up to five, they pay the 500, and each additional over the five, they pay 100 per. So we got our clarification because we wanted to make sure everything was straight. I don't have his email in front of me at the moment. I can try pulling it up, but he, he did clear it up and, and everything, I think we'll be fine with it at this point. With that, I yield.
Hearing no further discussion. Counsel Vice President?
Counsel Dion, do you want the, do you want it amended to say the second one? I'm sorry, for the third piece, each additional?
I would make that, I would make that amendment, just to, yeah, to, to make it, to clarify it.
Okay. So a motion to amend?
Motion to amend the additional small wire facility over five on each. Or each, each additional small wireless facility over five on an existing pole structure.